Good evening. I'm going to call this September 19th, 2024 Sammamish Planning Commission Meeting to order. Let us start out with roll call. Mike Bresko.
Here.
Sudha Sankara.
Here.
John Bachman.
Here.
Hisham El Kowad.
Here.
Sayed Sapavian.
Here.
Ajay Shakrapati.
Here.
I am Mark Bachman and I am here. Next is approval of this evening's agenda that tonight we're going to be talking about development regulations and does anybody have any comments on the agenda? No? Okay, we'll call the agenda approved. Next is approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting, which was September 5th. Any corrections to the meeting minutes from the September 5th meeting? Looks like there's none, so we'll call September 5th meeting minutes approved. Next is non-agenda public comment. Would anyone like to make non-agenda public comment? Once again, our agenda topic for this evening is continuing review of the 2024 Comp Plan implementing development regulations. So anything else? Now's the time for non-agenda public comment at three, comment, three minutes per person. Mary's first.
Good evening. This is Mary Victor. Been here 24 years in Sammamish. But some of the stuff I am talking about tonight is from Bozeman, Montana, where I grew up as well. So I sent in three emails. One was my public comment on the agenda, but for non-agenda, I sent in some various materials that I've learned over the last two or three years looking at things. And I did print some of them. They're the same as online. So on this little teeny picture that I handed out, you don't really need to read the text there because you can read it online. It's actually from Michigan. It's an example of what a PUD can do, which is planned urban development. We don't have those in the city, but we could have maybe as part of the next development regulations. But it really helps when it can fit around natural areas. So the top thing is like about 55, 58 homes, and then the bottom is the same homes but planned around with those. So I'm hoping that when we do regulations that we'd have at least one illustration that shows more of a natural area rather than just always using rectangular clusters of things. And then the other one I sent in, in Bozeman, there's something called the cohousing organization. That's where they have a group of people, and I forget how many is, it's like 20 to 50, and they all want to live together in one place. They have to have 100% agreement on things, which that sounds like really hard to do. It's what they do. And they had actually sent in a text amendment. So you've heard here about comp plan changes and text amendments. And Bozeman's cohousing people had said, hey, we have this form where you give us a building and then we can have X number of units in it, like four or six. But what we really like to have is the form of the building and be able to do more units or be able to do those differently. Like if we give a bike area, if we give a central common shared area, if we make the kitchen larger, can we get more units? So anyway, I stumbled across it in 2021 in the code in Bozeman. So I actually reiterated that to their city commission, who's like city council. And then I gave it to you tonight. So just the printed sheet actually says the stuff that I thought was cool about it. My address is blacked out on the back because that's a Montana address for me. And then the apartment buildings limited. This is actually from the Bozeman code, and it's probably too small to read here, but you can see where I highlighted it. So that's actually municipal code. And I don't know if that is something that the city or our consultant could work in for some of the things. But like if you take an apartment building, you want to change it around for configuration. It just looked really flexible, a really good design. And then also every time I do visit Montana and I visit part of my family, they live right by one of those getting built, and it's really lovely to see. So I just want to share those as non-agenda public comment. And thanks for your time.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody on the meeting?
No hands raised online.
Okay. Well, we are moving right along this evening. Next is our main agenda topic for this evening, which is continued review of the Comp Plan Development Regulations. And I'm not sure who's going to start the presentation. David, are you introducing? And then we'll dive in with Jeff.
Yeah, Chair Bachman, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. We have with us this evening Jeff Arango and Tyler Quinssmith with Framework. They are the lead consultant on the Comp Plan and in our middle housing regulations. They'll be doing a presentation this evening and fielding questions from the commission. I am hopeful that they're there. I could see them loaded here in the system, but I'm waiting to see if they turn the camera on. I don't know if there's a glitch in the system.
Hey, Rich. Jeff said they can't hear anything online, which is why they didn't respond to the [inaudible].
So for anybody watching in the audience, we're taking a moment here to make sure the tech is working. Thank you.
Does it have to be bad jokes?
Bad jokes.
Bad jokes.
the meeting, which will take probably around five minutes. So we will take a break for five minutes and come back.
something doesn't work, shut it off and try it again.
Exactly.
Our car broke down on Stevens Pass on Saturday. Was that his old car? We had to end up having four kids friends. We had seven people in the vehicle. We didn't take
Okay, so if I go over Stevens Pass, I'm going to be able to look out and be able to lean on underneath the hood.
Can you start the Zoom meeting?
That car's been over that pass like 2,000 times. So I guess, you know, two misfires.
Clearly.
Dave, question. October 1st, we have a joint meeting with the council?
We do not.
I saw it somewhere, but the council?
Yeah, that's going to be moved to the end of the year. Just there's a lot of stuff going on with the council with the budget. If you watch the meeting, I don't know why you would, but if you happen to watch the meeting on Tuesday, they had a really good conversation about the city's budget. And there's a definite, there is a pretty big deficit that we're facing. So council has going to have to make some hard decisions.
So they're going to have retreat and?
They'll probably do it in open session, regular session, but there's just not a lot of extra time.
Recording in progress.
To do a joint meeting right now.
What would have been the purpose of your meeting? You had one last year.
Probably related to town center.
I see.
We're all on the same page.
Recording in progress.
Hopefully in January, February. Once we're done with the Comp Plan, critical areas, rules. All the stuff that you've been working on, it is busy with it now. Other stuff they're doing. We're just running out, running out of time towards the end of the year.
We restarted. Log in and make sure we're good.
What do you call a kangaroo's lazy joey? Ouch potato.
All right. Let's try this again. So for those of you who might be out there watching online, we had a little technical difficulty. We got all the way to our main topic and realized that nobody online could hear us. So we're going to go back and check in on non-agenda public comment and see if anybody would like to make non-agenda public comment. And so I'll check in the room here. Anybody for non-agenda public comment? How about on the meeting? It's up to you, Mary. It's three minutes, so we can do either one. All right. So Mary is going to repeat her public comment, just to make sure that it got on the record.
Hi, this is Mary Victor for non-agenda public comment. I've been in Sammamish for 24 years. Right before 5:00, I did email in two emails that'll be online from things that I'd learned in the last couple of years that I thought were pretty cool and you guys might not need to know about for the things upcoming with the city. The first one is on planned unit developments. It's called a PUD. I handed out a sheet of paper with the little diagram. PUDs are great when you want to cluster things together or help protect and preserve natural areas. And the little picture that I emailed in, it shows like 55 homes kind of in a block style traditional development versus with the PUD where you can see the critical areas and natural features. So I think it's just important to know that. I think as part of maybe a future development regulations, Phase 3, we'll be doing that. We talked about it before, but right now we don't have it at the city. But the example that I gave is just something I found online from Michigan, and I thought it was very useful. And I'm hoping that some of the drawings that we get in our information from the city for some of the things we're working on would have, like they can go ahead and do all the rectangular stuff, but maybe at the end have a nice presentation which shows kind of a more realistic view of how it might be implemented somewhere in Sammamish. And then the second thing I sent in, it's from Bozeman, Montana, where I grew up, and I go to a lot of those meetings online. They have something called the cohousing people, and those people, they're in a group. They like to live together. They, so they kind of live in a dormitory style. They share their kitchen. They share their walk so they don't have to be covered by snow a lot. And they had come to the city of Bozeman and said, hey, R3, as zoning is not getting used, can we have that? And then they also had a form of the building where they were allowed like four to maybe five or six, or I can't remember how many units. And they said, well, we'd like to be able to do that, but we'd like to have some flexibility. So if we have bigger common areas, maybe we can have more units or a bigger shared kitchen. Anyway, it's just a really cool concept. It actually is getting built in Bozeman. I see it when I drive by on my retirement trips there. And it just seems very useful and applicable. So I just wanted, I sent you a two-page thing with my summary of it, and then the handout from the code where I highlighted the Bozeman's code, so you can see how that works. And maybe that would apply to something that we're doing here in our city. So thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Okay, now anybody on the meeting?
Yes, we have one hand raised online. Mr. Paul Stickney, I'm going to promote you now.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I did not intend to leave a comment, but it's kind of a second, you know, bite at the apple, and I really will keep this short. By the way, I heard Chair Bachman's joke. He enjoyed it. I have a good for the good of an order, a similar clean joke. What do you call a line of rabbits walking backwards? A receding hairline. Anyway, my only comment tonight is two lines from my non-agenda comment. After 25 years, it's time to turn the corner and take meaningful steps to reduce citywide housing imbalance. And at the same time, that process will take meaningful steps to reduce fiscal imbalance significantly with virtually all positives and almost no negatives at all, except perceptive. So that's it. Under a minute. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Paul. That joke hit a little too close to home for me. Anybody else on the meeting?
No more hands.
Okay. Let's try again and go to our main topic for this evening, which is continuing our discussion about the 2024 Comp Plan Development Code Regulation Updates. There we go. We can see you this time, Jeff and Tyler, so this is a good start.
Great. Good evening, Chair Bachman, David Pyle, Community Development. With us this evening, we have Jeff Arango and Tyler Quinssmith with Framework. They are our lead consultants on the Comp Plan and the Middle Housing Update. We'll be doing a presentation on the status of the middle housing work, followed by the opportunity to field some questions from the commission and receive some feedback about maybe any adjustments that you see fit prior to bringing it back to you again for a public hearing and ultimately recommendations to the city council. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Can I just get a confirmation?
We can hear you.
Can hear you. Yep.
Here, and can you see the screen?
Yep, all good.
Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. All, David, thank you so much. Tyler Quinssmith here from Framework, joined by Jeff at Framework as well. We're pleased to have another opportunity to talk with you all about the development regulations as part of the 2024 comprehensive plan update. This evening, we're going to revisit a handful of topics that we've brought to you in the past, most of which are included in the red line draft that was part of the agenda packet for this meeting. And then there's, there's two new topics here which we haven't discussed yet but are included in the draft. So recognizing that we've, we've talked a lot about most of these, I will keep my remarks relatively brief. And as always, welcome questions and discussions after each topic. So beginning with the only code update topic that is not reflected in the red line draft before you this evening is the concept of an affordability requirement. This is a recommendation from Arch, which we presented to you and discussed at a fairly high level during our last meeting. And over the, the last couple of weeks, we've been in coordination with Arch and still have this section of the code under construction. It will be included in a subsequent draft. But what's really awesome is the, the attention to detail that Arch has put into a draft program for affordable housing requirement across the city. And in order to do this, they've taken the draft middle housing overlay standards that are in the red line draft and run them through a financial pro forma to determine how much residual profit comes with a variety of development scenarios across the city. And where we are now is, is working on refining a program with the overarching parameters of 10% of all units needing to be affordable to 80% of the area median income. This would apply to all development across the city's residential areas, including single family, which we recognize was a bit of contention last, last meeting, and we're hoping to discuss that a little bit more with you tonight. With the option for projects that don't amount to a full unit, you know, performing as an included affordable unit on site, the option to pay a fee in lieu, which would essentially go to funding affordable housing elsewhere in the city. This evening, we're, we're open to any at all questions and comments you have on this concept, but we're particularly interested in refining the exemptions that might be permissible under this program. So included in the box in the top right here are a couple exemptions that we had on the slide the last time we were together, recognizing that there are some circumstances where, you know, existing homes or smaller core carve-out units shouldn't necessarily be, you know, held accountable for this sort of calculation and affordability requirement. And then, most importantly, we hope that an exemption in this program would recognize the affordability by design that comes through with smaller units. So if developers were inclined to build smaller units, such as small cottages or small ADUs, those would be exempt from this requirement, recognizing that those are inherently more affordable by design. So with that, I'll open it up for questions. This is a relatively complex and dynamic topic as it's kind of emerging forward, but we're happy to answer any questions you might have about this requirement.
I definitely have a few, but well, who else has some? John, looks like you have some.
I just have a quick definition. Remind us the definition of a carve-out unit?
So that would be within the existing envelope of a building or of a single-family home, per se, if the, the owner were to subdivide it into, say, a duplex or an attached ADU, that wouldn't necessarily expand the footprint of the existing building.
Who else? Sayed, go ahead.
Couple of que, couple of questions. Question number one, the exemption of small units under 800. You mentioned, you mentioned that would apply to ADUs only?
As, as drafted, well, I mean, this is actually still not drafted, but as we've been discussing, it would be, it would apply to any, any unit, not necessarily just ADUs, but any unit that would be under a certain threshold. 800 is just a potential threshold here.
And also, can you comment about the possibility of having a PUD as a part of the affordable housing? Can we have that?
Jeff, you want to take that?
Well, I was just going to say that the developing, planned unit development portion of the code was previously on the work program for Phase 2, but it has not been implemented to my knowledge to date.
It has not. And, you know, we, we, with HB 1110 passing, it kind of negated the necessity to have a planned unit development section. And also with the inclusion of unit lot divisions, it also diminishes the need for a planned unit development section. I still see value in a planned unit development section. However, we don't see it as a priority as much as we used to now that we have 1110 pushing middle housing. And now that we're considering a unit lot division, which is very similar to a planned unit development, benefit to planned unit development, which is not an affordable housing zoning control or program. What it does is it provides flexibility to allow siting of homes under unique circumstances. So you don't have prescriptive setbacks and lot coverages and heights and those kinds of things. Instead, it's done through design. So it's a custom design. It's kind of like a custom zoning overlay that is created uniquely for that project. And it generally would include bigger buildings, smaller buildings, some affordable buildings, lots of landscaping. Landscaping is a big thing with planning of developments. You get a better product. What we can't require a PUD for HB 1110 because we can't require anything that is more restrictive than what we would otherwise require for our single-family zoning district. So...
Well, let them kind of maybe ask the question differently. Would it be an incentive for the developer to apply for the PUD to meet the affordable housing?
Well, it could be, except that HB 1110 has already kind of diminished that. We, we, the incentive has kind of gone away now that they're allowed to have three units per lot or, you know, all these extra things that 1110 adds. We were considering that prior to 1110 for exactly that reason, is it could offer an incentive to try to build in some affordability. But now that 1110 is here, we don't see it as much of a priority. I do want to point out on this slide that the stacked blocks that are there, that that's the old proposal that we had. Now that we've actually received back the Arch recommendation, we're looking at eliminating that red box on the bottom, and we would have an inclusionary requirement for all development in the R zones. You know, if you're going to build a single-family home on a vacant lot, there, it would require 10% of the density. There's a, there's a formula you'd have to complete to determine what the, what the requirement would be. And if you can't build a whole unit, you'd have to then provide, say you're only, you're, you're, you're building a little short plot, and it only resulted in, say, four units. Well, .4 units doesn't result in a whole unit. So you'd be able to then pay a fee in lieu. But if you had, say, 10 units, then, and I don't know exactly how this would work with the math, either the 10th or 11th unit would require, would be required to be affordable, or there would be circumstances when you could pay a fee in lieu, which would be the equivalent of the value of that, using the formula of that unit that you're not building. Depending on the developer and depending on who you talk to, some builders would want to build it. Other builders would want to pay the fee and not have to deal with building it. It really, I think, is a, is sort of a toss-up between those two.
And second question about fee and lieu. Can you walk us through how it does it work? And second question about fee and lieu, can you walk us through how does it work? So let's say if I'm a developer and I want to take advantage of that, would that money go to bank?
It would go to the city. The city, the city would then have a, would have a budget line that would be affordable, the, the fees collected. But kind of like, and I shouldn't say it this way, but I'm gonna, it's kind of like a affordable housing impact fee, but you can't call it that. But that's kind of what it's kind of like. So what ends up happening is that, that money goes into a, a bar, a budget code into an account. And then the city could either route that money to Arch as part of the Arch Housing Trust Fund contribution, or the city could choose to use that money locally for projects and partner with builders, like we're working with the Sammish Presbyterian, um, now, um, you know, and it would allow us to partner with them on bringing affordable housing projects to the city.
Ajay, Ajay, go ahead.
I, I just have one question. Uh, to the point of the small units, what, what prevents the builders to build really luxury units with a lot of features? Uh, keep it to under 800 square feet? Um, and, uh, skim this affordability, uh, level requirement at all? In this case? Yeah.
Nothing, nothing, nothing would prohibit that.
Nothing prohibits, right? They can still go ahead and do that.
However, if they were required to build the unit, they could not trim the unit down, so to speak. They'd have to make the unit the equivalent of the other units. So, so in the, in the, in the inverse, if they were required to do it, but what you're talking about, if I understand it correctly, is if I'm a builder and I build a 790 square foot unit and I make it super nice, that I'm going to sell it for the highest money I can sell it for. This, it's not really affordable, but by, but for the square footage. Um, so, so no, we can't, we can't control that.
Cannot control that. Okay, okay.
Who else?
Who else?
I'll, I'll jump in, I'm, I'm confused. So, um, affordability requirements. How does this relate to the affordable housing targets that we have in the comp plan?
So, so this would be one way to help achieve the 80% AMI units, which we don't have many of, most of our units are in deeper affordability levels. This is not designed directly to respond to that. This is not part of compliance in our comp plan to achieve that. We have a completely different approach that we've gone over before. Um, instead, this is in addition to, and what it would be is, you know, basically the challenge is that HB 1110 provided, um, a lot more development capacity to property owners. It's a windfall to property owners, but it did not require any form of affordability along with it. However, a late amendment to HB 1110, part of the legislative cycle, added a provision that allows cities to do inclusionary affordability requirements as part of it in order to capture some of the re, the rezone, the upzone value, if you will. So if you think about it, what, one, the way to think about this is HB 1110 constitutes an upzone for property owners, because it allows you to go from one single family home on a lot to three, in our case, um, which constitutes, uh, an upzone. So, so when that happens, the, the, that is where many cities have taken the opportunity to, with that added value that is brought to the property owner, to capture some of that value for the purpose of housing programs. It's an affordable housing program approach in cities, um, whereby, um, if you analyze the market conditions, you can understand what the anticipated or, or a reasonable expectation is on return of investment. And you can model it, you can determine how, how, what you could set reasonably an affordable housing fee or a housing program fee for, for reinvestment back into that city for different types of housing. So what's happening here is we're capturing that and we're, we're then going to reinvest it back into affordable housing programs that, that could be at deeper levels of affordability in accordance with 1220. However, th- that is a, that is a, um, i- it's an addition to the other work we did.
And so this is, I understand that this is separate from the targets that are in the comp plan. But this would be a means to help encourage the development of more affordable housing?
We, 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 we think so, um, yes.
Okay, well. So that's, that's part of my confusion. And then, well, I'm, well, I'm at it then, because this may help clarify a little bit. So I've, I've got this upzone. How does the existing, like, wouldn't by definition, existing homes have to be exempt? How, how would that work out? Like, why is this something we would need to be discussing in terms of possible exemptions? You understand, I'm pretty confused right now, so.
Because if you're, it's the total units that result, and this is a question for you all. You, you could, according to the models I understand it, if you were to retain a home, and in part, because what we're saying is if you retain the home, you get three units on top of that. So you get four units total. So that's an even bigger incentive for somebody to retain the home. So we're already incentivizing that. So the question is, do you also then, do you then require, because it's being redeveloped at that time, the property, do you require that all four units pay the fee? Or do you require that, that only three of the units pay the fee? Or what if somebody keeps the home and builds a second unit?
Then, then how does that work? I mean, the, these are questions that we're asking, that we're, we're hoping to get some direction on, because we're, we're, you know, we're, we're building this out. The, the starting point that we have on recommendation from Arch is 10% of all new units. Well, what is considered a new unit? If you as a commission wanted to recommend that an existing lot, an existing house on an existing lot that is undergoing an addition by way of either a carve out or by way of, of adding units to the property, that that existing house or existing unit is exempt? Great, I don't think that that's, that's a good starting place. Then you would move up from there about, what about small units? Should some of those be exempt? Then you move up from there about, what about a new home on an existing lot? That somebody, I think the example is, you know, say I've lived in Sammish for 20 years and I, I bought, I live in a big house with my family. My kids are now moved out and I bought a new lot 15 years ago and I paid it off. And now I want to downsize and build a new house that's smaller on that lot and sell my other, my existing house. Should you be subject to paying a, a 10% affordability, um, housing fee on that, on that, on that lot with that one new home? Then you go up to short plats, should a short plat be required to pay it? So you, you can see there's a sort of a linear progression that you're, you're working down of, well, where does the fee really kick in?
Okay, that's helpful. Since Mark was shaking his head, maybe you have a comment?
Is there a way that we can say this is only applicable to new commercial developments? If a builder comes today and wants to build 10 houses, one of those 10 houses is an affordable unit. But if you are, or I want to expand our houses, we don't need to add another 10% and give it as an affordable unit or pay a penalty. Because all what we will do at that time, we will just inc- increase the cost of building a home.
Right, so, so I think, I think, you know, the, the one we're not going to, you know, shy away from is that adding a 10% affordability fee or requirement could, could slow down development. Could, it could slow the delivery of market units. Um, it could raise the cost of construction. The question, and, and I think this is the part that there's, there may be disagreement on, but the, the, the finding that Arch makes is that a builder has a certain expectation on return. And what happens is this comes out of that expectation of return. They're not necessarily going to sell it for more. They'll, they'll always, a builder will always sell a unit for what the market will bear, what the market will provide. I've not met a builder that's going to say, oh, well, if you, if you took away my impact fees, when I go to sell the house, I'm going to lower the price $18,000. That, that's, um, so, so the question becomes is, is where does it really come from? I, I wouldn't, I would, I would say that the Arch finding is, is that it doesn't get passed off to the, to the, to the buyer. Um, instead, it comes out of the profit margin that the builder is making. Because the buil- the buil- the builder is not necessarily going to be able to raise the price that much more. I have seen it done in tricky ways though, where the sale price is what it is, and then they go to close, and then there's closing costs. And the fee is then assigned at the point of closing cost, which then does raise the price for the buyer. So it's really all about how this is set up and how it's executed in practice. Um, so that it's written into the price that the builder is selling it for, as opposed to what actually is the final closing price.
I'm going to go back to the example of one out of 10. So do they pick from day one which unit will be the affordable unit? Is it built to the same quality of the other units? Or is it a lesser quality? Or is it the, the corner that no one wants to live in that no one can get to?
It's, it's required to be the same quality.
Who, who picks which unit within the subdivision?
The builder will pick it.
Then they will pick the corner one that no one?
They might do that.
Who else? Ajay?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, you know. Um, it states that this program would capture some, but not all residual profits. What does that mean? So.
Yeah, what that means is when Arch modeled it, um, they identified that based on land, land costs, construction costs, other costs written into the project, that it costs this much to build the unit. The sale price, based on the, the data that they pulled, um, would, would allow for it to sell for this much. So the residual profit is anything above what the actual cost of the delivery of the unit is, is then the residual profit. So what they're saying is they're adding another, another sliver in there that comes out of that residual profit that becomes that, that 10% fee, which shrinks the residual profit. I'm not going to, I'm going to be totally transparent here. Um, so, so that, that ultimately is how this program works, is that because there's an upzone happening and because HB 1110 does not have any affordability written into it, but for the, you get four if you build one, which we don't think will hardly ever happen. Um, then, then what's happening is they're saying that the legislature said you could incorporate in affordability requirement as a, as part of a housing program with a city. We're proposing to add a housing requirement. The cha- the challenge is, is that you can't require something for middle housing that you don't require for single family. So, so we, if we, if we exempted single family altogether, then we couldn't, could not impose this on middle housing.
So who's going to be, um, capturing those residual profits? Would that be city or would that be Arch or is it a combination?
It's a combination and it happens, it happens at the end of the process when the, it happens at the beginning of the process, when the unit is being, when it's going through permitting and entitlement, there's a requirement added that there be this, that covenant created for each uni- for the, the unit, for, for an affordable unit if they're building it. Or that prior to, um, a certain phase of the construction, it depends on the type of project, prior to occupancy, that, that an affordable housing fee be paid by the developer.
Okay.
John, go ahead.
So I want to back up a little bit. So traditionally, if I had a large lot and I wanted to build a couple more houses, I'd have to go through the subdivision process. It's expensive, takes quite a bit of time. So now with the overlay, let's say, could I sell the unit lots?
Absolutely.
And then?
There's multiple ways now that you could sell them. So you could, if you had a small lot, let's say you just had a lot that was, I don't know, in the R6 and was the traditional, the tru- the, the way the math works out is usually at 7,200 square feet in R6, right? That's the square math. Um, so let's say you had a 7,200 square foot lot, you had an existing home that was in the right place on the lot. You could build a duplex in the back and you could condominiumize that duplex and sell it. Um, or you could come in with a unit lot division and you could build a duplex, but it would be, um, it would be firewalled and it would be zero lot line construction. And you could then sell fee simple duplex lots. Um, or if you had a bigger lot, or if you were a developer and you were targeting a, an older division in the city, like I've seen happen here before, and you were able to convince all of the property owners in that, in that division to sell their properties to you, you would then do a, do a, um, consolidation and you would, an assemblage of lots. And you would come in and you would do a, um, a, you, you would either do three on each lot and just, and then just do, do, do what we were just talking about. Or you would consolidate all of them, bulldoze the whole thing. And you would then go about doing a unit lot division to work out the density based on the density numbers that we have. So you would be getting R18 in that case, because you'd be building out, um, 18 units per acre as opposed to what the base was at 16, or at six units per acre, excuse me.
Right, so the, if we implemented something like the Arch recommendation, that wouldn't, that wouldn't happen at the sale of a unit lot. It would happen at the development that goes on the unit lot. And then secondarily, frontage improvements and access and all of that stuff that usually goes with the subdivision, how much of that gets wrapped into the sale? Or just a raw unit lot? Are those still open questions?
Yeah, so it depends on the product, right? And it depends on if you're building a, building the unit or paying the fee. I think the fee is easier to capture at the point of, uh, earlier in the process. You could require the fee be paid prior to issuance of construction permit. You could do that.
Right.
Um, the, the, if they're building the unit, the challenge becomes that now the unit has a covenant attached to it that's managed by Arch and that prospective buyers need to prove that they are in that income band. And the builder needs to prove that it's being sold in that income band. Um, and, and that that's really pushed down the line to the point of sale. They do, Arch does have, have a long list of buyers that are waiting to buy properties. Um, and fee simple is really the product that people desire.
Yeah.
Um, there are covenants that say that if you resell it, then you have to pay back. There's a, there's a, there's an equity, you know, a
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Et cetera, yeah.
But still not clear on, okay, I've, I've sold a unit lot. As part of the sale, did I have to also do some of the utility improvements and all the other normal things that will go along with the subdivision before construction even starts?
Yes, so it, it follows the subdivision law.
Okay.
Yeah, which requires that prior to a lot being created, that and the city could dictate the level of infrastructure required. We, we currently require either you build the infrastructure or you bond for it. So you could bond for it today and allow, actually, we've had some projects that, that at various phases and have various levels of success, have bonded. There are some where we wish we hadn't allowed them to bond. Um, but there, but the, but that isn't our code today. We did that add, we did add that with development regs phase two. Um, because often there's a bill, a builder will want to move straight to, um, building permits. And it's easier, there's less impact to the neighborhood. Right now, the, the old process would be, would be delayed for, you know, it could take years to build it. Whereas if you can actually build the infrastructure and the building at the same time, it's less liability for the risk, risk for the builder. It's less impact to the neighborhood and you can get it done in a much more expedited manner.
Right, and then next year, we were going to discuss what those neighborhood improvements might look like and how they get applied. So that's separate. Okay, thanks.
Ajay, I think you had something?
Yes, I have, I'm, I'm still going to go back to the existing homes because I'm trying to wrap my brain around one of the points that is coming up on this. If I owned a 2,500 square feet home and I have the potential to extend it by another thousand square feet, like 40% of the, this one, right? And I say that I'm going to just have it as an ADU and as a living space and all of those things. And I build that. Am I not going against the, then where, where am I getting, uh, penalized is a bad word, but where am I getting caught in this thing? Is it in the fee in lieu option?
Right, so in that circumstance where you're building an ADU, we likely would have, ADUs would be exempt. Um, and if you're just keeping it, you're, you're building it and you're adding an ADU, you'd not have to pay the fee.
You're not able to pay the fee.
If you, it was just existing home. Who was a new home with an ADU, then you'd be paying the fee for the new home.
Got it.
If you had an existing home and you wanted to build two ADUs in the backyard, if ADUs were exempt, I think, think that, I think that currently is a proposal, I'm looking at Jeff, I can't remember. But then, then you would not have to pay the fee.
Then I'd not have to pay the fee. But if I just wanted to extend it, I have no idea whether I'm going to make it an ADU or not. I just want to extend my house to another thousand square feet. Am I still not going to get the fee in lieu option?
No.
Thing, so then, then that, there's no way to catch that. Isn't this counterintuitive? You're making housing more unaff- unaffordable, because you're letting that being built um, into bigger homes that are existing homes, isn't that a loophole is what I'm Isn't that a loophole is what I'm trying to ask you? Isn't that?
It could be. Oh, go ahead, Jeff.
I was just gonna say, it's totally receptive to your, your point. And I think some of the limitations on FAR will control for that. So the, the square footage limitations that apply to single family. But you're, you're right, it is a little bit of a loophole in the sense that, you know, all of the fees and everything are based on the number of units, not necessarily the size, particularly if existing units are expanded. So if you expanded that a thousand square feet and it was part of your single family and you had enough FAR to do that, you wouldn't have to pay the fee. But then if at some point you converted it to another unit that was subject to it, assuming it wasn't exempt, then the fee would kick in there.
Got it. So my, my point is that can, can we make, can we try to fix that loophole? Because that's going to be a problem, right? As if you look at, there are lots of areas in Samamish where I think that loophole is going to be a factor as people will start to build. I'm not saying that that's going to be like the next big thing, but still, wouldn't that happen?
I mean, I would say that there is some potential of that, but I think we're trying to find a reasonable middle ground and focus on projects that are of scale or that are actually producing new units. But to answer your question, yes, you could base the fee on, on square footage. So there would be that option, but at this time, it's not something that we've considered.
Yeah.
Relative to expanding an existing home. Yeah.
That's right. I'm not saying that it should have been considered already, but I'm saying that let's consider it right now. Because if somebody's gonna do that, at least let them give something to the city so that the city can then use that to build more affordable housing somewhere else. Instead of everybody just building up and building a bigger and bigger unit and they are making it more unaffordable.
So are you proposing then the fee be sort of set by square footage?
Yes.
So that regardless of what you're building, whether it's an addition, whether it's a new, whether it's an ADU even, or whether it's, and if you're building 1,000 square feet, then the fee is calculated as this.
Yes.
If you're building middle housing with 10,000 square feet of living area or, you know, space, then the fee is this.
Yes.
And, and that, you know, are you saying that it should become, that it should be more of a, you know, what are they? I'm sorry, I get this all the wrong all the time, progressive? In that it increases the bigger?
Exactly.
But it gets bigger per square foot, the bigger the building?
The bigger the building, exactly.
Interesting.
So isn't that, isn't, there has to be something which has to let us get closer to the affordable housing goal. I, I'm seeing a lot of possibilities. I'm not saying that everybody's gonna go and rush up and build 4,000 square feet of extra space and other things, but there's loopholes here that could be used.
What are your thoughts on that, Jeff?
Well, I, I would say first that, you know, regardless of how it applies or whether it applies in that situation, Arch's recommendation is to go with the square footage approach, I believe, because it is so flexible and scalable, right? So for what it's worth, that is something we could look at regardless of, you know, how we apply it or where we set the exemption level. So, I mean, it does, there is definitely some logic in that, you know, if you're looking at the, the tension between larger units and affordability. So it's a policy option for sure.
So you're saying Arch already thought of it and I didn't think of it right now?
Well, I think you thought of it in a different way than it was conceptualized to us, so you get credit for that. But they did raise, they did raise square footage as a potential option. And I, my recollection is that was their preference.
Got it. Jokes apart, I think that's something we should definitely explore.
But I disagree with you on that, Ajay. The only reason is, what if that family is building it to support their mother and father? Just, you know, who doesn't have any income or anything? So it depends on the number of the residents in the house? You know?
I think if the goal is to add more affordable units, we should remove the fee in lieu. There should not be fee in lieu option. Because again, developers will pay it. And people like you and I, it will just become more expensive on them.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Jeff, I'm gonna, sorry. I'm gonna jump in here with my contrarian views. And I acknowledge that, you know, I'm, I'm opposed to this and so I have a perspective. But first, I, I would just say I'd like, I, we've had Arch present to us a number of times in the past. And I believe Arch has a very laudable goal of creating more affordable housing. And they have very good intent with what they do. They also have a very narrow focus on something that is important to them and don't necessarily, in my opinion, represent the balance that we may need as we look at an entire community. So I'm a little, struggling a little bit with this whole, Arch told us this and Arch told us that. They're an important and valuable organization in our broader community. And I think we should listen to what they have to say. I'm less interested in letting them tell us as a city what we should do. And that kind of feels like what this is. So that's one concern that I certainly have. I also absolutely agree that this will do nothing but make most housing less affordable. Because yes, day one, perhaps the developer can't pass that fee through. Day two, they will start to. I mean, I've lived here 25 years and the price of housing was $200,000 and now it's 1.4 million. They will find a way to pass that fee through. Making the non-affordable units, which by the way, they're not gonna build, the affordable ones, they're gonna pay the fee and then everything else is gonna get more expensive. I, I just am unconvinced that this will do anything other than create a fund within the city budget that Arch can access. And so if we proceed with this, there's a few things that I would absolutely want to see. I would wanna see an exclusion for owner occupied, and there's probably a better way to describe this, but someone who, you know, just as you just, someone described, they have a lot, they wanna build a house, they wanna live in it. Yeah, that's, to me, that, that, they should be excluded from this. And frankly, I, I struggle with calling it a fee. It's a tax, let's just be honest, it's a tax. It's a sneaky tax is what it is. And so I'm, I, you know, I would say, an, an owner occupied, maybe there's a better way to describe that, should be excluded. I also struggle a little bit with how this 10%. And so if we're talking about eight, 10, 20, 50 units being built, that, I, yes, I could support that. That's a developer, they're gonna sell the housing, they're likely to have an option to build some affordable units. I'm struggling a little bit with, you know, if it's a common, like we've looked at all these scenarios where somebody's gonna build four or five or take a lot and build a primary one and some smaller units. All this is, is just a tax on top of them in their construction effort because they can't build 10. They can only, you know, if they're gonna fit four or five on there. So now those four or five, maybe one of them could be affordable, but how's the math gonna work on that? Because they're probably not gonna do it because it's cheaper to pay 10%. So now all the rest of them, they're gonna find a way to build that 10% into the price of the housing. I, I just don't see how this, this is very practical or that it works. So there would have to be a lot more, as David likes to say, turning of the dial, right? If we're gonna do this, the dial needs to be set, in my opinion, correctly. So that, and you said ADUs would be exempt? Then that should be on the list. I think that's a good one. And I also think that the owner occupied one, you know, somehow should be. Oh, the other comment I wanted to make is, this is kind of interesting where how we're suddenly talking about the increased value due to an upzone. I've been involved in this for seven years. And whenever we've in the past talked about an upzone, then we talked about the property tax that goes with that. And that's the way that we, the city, gets more from the upzone is through the property tax, which is ongoing, not a fee that you suddenly charge at the beginning. So I, I don't, that, this feels like it's different than we've talked about before. And if somebody builds six units, then there's gonna be, I presume, more property tax and the city collects more property tax. So the city gets some benefit that's ongoing in the future too, not just a one-time fee that gets put into a fund that in theory should be used for affordable housing. So again, that would be another restriction on this. We would have to put in some language that absolutely guarantees that the money stays within the community. It does not become a fund that then we annually do the right thing and contribute to Arch and then they take those dollars to Kirkland and build affordable housing. We have to make sure that that's not what happens either. So maybe the devil is in the details here, but I'm really struggling with how we can get there and make sure that it works properly. There's a lot of loopholes and, and sneaky, sneaky stuff that can happen and it could turn out to have an outcome that we did not anticipate. That's my opinion.
Can I add one, one point? I just wanna clarify that. So this didn't come from us directly from Arch. We actually went to Arch and asked them for a recommendation. This comes from the city council. The city council directed staff at a recent meeting to go and study and bring back an inclusionary requirement related to affordable housing or related to middle housing. So we are responding to city council direction on this. And we went to Arch for support to ask them to help us identify, you know, following the modeling that they're doing, how, how an inclusionary affordable requirement could work. So that's where that comes from. It's, it's not the source with Arch, it's sourced with the city council.
That's a, that's a good clarification. Is Arch making this recommendation to other cities?
Arch is making similar recommendations to other cities. However, they're modeling each city's economic conditions differently because of the different factors that go into it in different cities. So each recommendation to each city is unique to that city and the data that, that is prepared by the economist and the, the, the other consultants that support that is, is unique to that city.
Have they given us some success story of what the other cities have done with the, applying the Arch guidelines?
So as no other city yet has implemented HB 1110, we're all working on this together right now. There are not any good examples of that specific to HB 1110. However, the city of Redmond has had an inclusionary affordable fee for all single family.
With the same guidelines that we were talking about?
Pretty similar to that. And they are just adjusting them now related to middle housing. There are other examples of inclusionary requirements for, you know, the most common is multifamily zones when rezoning occurs. There, I've worked on a multitude of projects in Bellevue that required inclusionary affordability but offered a fee in lieu where the city of Bellevue collected that fee and then was able to use that fee and partner with other, with other not-for-profits or grants and whatever. And it makes the city more attractive as a grant recipient when we have a program like that, an actual housing program. So if the city wanted to actually bring in some not-for-profit builders to build affordable housing, let's say as part of the, the town center, there was a, a land in lieu that they provided. And then say the city had some funds as part of its housing program, if we, if we're able to set this up. We would then use that land in lieu and the fees that we had and then we'd partner with a not-for-profit builder and we likely would then get a, a state grant. We could do an MFT program. And we could also then at the same time get, be attracted to other grants like the Amazon grants that we're hearing about, some of the Microsoft grants we're hearing about. And next thing you know, we have a completely viable project that, that is being built. But absent this type of program, we are less attractive for those, as a recipient for those grant dollars. And the housing program itself isn't really built out to the point where it becomes functional.
Go ahead, John.
So thanks for that question. That was what I was going, we can always copy or learn from others. The other thought I have on this is wherever we land, it's not a permanent stake. We, we can adjust going forward. I don't know how often though.
I, I would say yes, except that if we land on not doing it, it is a permanent stake. Because under state law, you are only able to apply a program like this when the rezone and the added value is occurring. So what happens here is if, is if this window closes and we pass, and this is why we're talking about it right now, is, is if we pass our middle housing and as we're required to under HB 1110 and we do not take action, we cannot then come back at a later date and then apply it at that point in time. We have to wait until some other upzone is occurring associated with that.
The, the cost of housing, how much it costs to build a house today? I know it depends on many things, but at the end of the day, it's supply and demand. And with the middle housing and all the other things, don't we think that there will be more supply that will push the prices down? That will make some AMI more affordable to a bigger sector of the population? If, if I look at the average house of the new, the average price of the new houses being built today, and I say it's about a million and a half. And I know it's more than that. I know it's significantly more than that. How much can someone at 80% of AMI afford? To be affordable to that individual? Does it need to be 500K? Does it need to be 700K?
Yeah, we, we actually have a chart on that. Several months ago with the, with part of the comp plan, we pulled that up. We're gonna try and find it that shows the rent and, and how much somebody can afford for a mortgage based on, based on that, that area median income.
Because I think that the delta will still be huge. And that delta, the developer is not going to absorb.
Right, and, and so in, in theory, I think the legislature's direction they were going, you know, it's, it's a good one. They were trying to increase supply and then in theory then, and allow for different sized buildings, smaller buildings, smaller units, that that would then bring down the, the prices just by simple square footage and supply and demand, as you state. The, and, and I, I believe it will make some effect. Like I, I do. I, however, don't think in Samamish that we have that many viable properties to really apply middle housing. So, I mean, that, that's a question in itself of how successful an affordability program would be because how much money are you actually bringing in through a fee in lieu program? Nonetheless, our council asked us to look, look at it, so here we are talking about it. But it's, it's, you know, there's other things too that, that the market could do, but we're just not seeing it being built here. You know, we've offered duplexes and townhomes for how long in our code? Do you see them being built? You know, there's other, there's these other things that I read about in, in Planning Magazine publications where there's, there's builders who are building basic roofed-in space. And then they sell it to a buyer who then can finish it themselves. They build, they build the warm shell envelope, they finish it, they put the bathrooms in and things and, but then they leave large portions of the space to be finished by the buyer. And that brings the cost way down because you're not buying a finished unit. And so, you know, these are the things that we don't see happening here that we would really love to see, but that builders aren't, just aren't interested in doing it.
You, you can only do so much to make Samamish affordable under the current market conditions. And what you can do to other cities, you will not be able to do here. And it's just, it's the fact. It's, it's the reality we're living in. I, I don't like it. I wanna make it more affordable, but I know that we won't be able to, to make it affordable to, to most of the population. We, we can, we can only make it affordable to a certain group of the population. And doing this, I think even that small group that can afford it, it will make it harder on them.
But we do have, but we do have a legal obligation to meet the state guidelines as far as affordability and affordable housing.
The state did not say 10%.
So are you concerned about a 10% only?
That's all what we are talking about here today. It's this slide. We're not talking about other state mandates.
Right, but there are a number of issues that we talk about. The chair, as well as Ajay, they talk about the, if I understand what you guys, you're talking about is that concern about fee, fee in lieu option is one and then the other one is as far as existing homes.
But those are not the state mandates, right?
But those are the issues that we're talking about.
Yeah, we have to comply with HB 1110. Did I say it right? HB 1110 and, and the other requirements, yeah. I, I believe this is really just a, an add-on idea to try to incentivize more affordability or create options that might, or really create a, a pathway for some dollars that could, in theory, create some affordable units.
So we don't, we don't have to adopt the recommendation of the Arch?
I, I think I understand we don't have to. Or maybe the better way to say it is, we could choose how to.
I think the question is, the city council tasked us with considering an addition of an, in, in affordability requirement, inclusionary affordability requirement with middle housing. And the question to the commission would be is, you know, is this a good idea, first of all? And, you know, regardless of the answer to that, if you were to adopt one, what should the exclusion? what should the exclusions be and where generally should the dials be set? So I think those are the two questions for you on this. And you could come back and say, no, we don't recommend it for these reasons. You've raised a lot of those this evening. Recognizing that we're losing the opportunity to do it, we still recommend this, this way. However, if the, if the council still chooses to do it, then we, we would recommend that these be some of the, the, the conditions of the program or the requirements with the program and how that goes along with that. Cause I think that's what the council's looking for is, what do you think of this? And then if you were, if you were going to do it, regardless of if you disagree, if you were going to do it, how would you form it up?
So it looks like that we're talking about three options. One is that adopting this as a recommendation as based on what Arch says. That's one option, basically accept what they, what they're talking about. Number one, modify that and tweak it a little bit as far as maybe taking the fee in lieu option or maybe clarify the things that Mike was talking about, the definition of housing. And what AJ was example, 2,500 and add 1,000 a square foot. And then you said that if it is going to be PU, if it is going to be ADU is going to be exempt. So kind of massage what the guidelines is. This is the second option. The third option is get away with it and come with the new guidelines. Is that what I'm hearing?
The, the third are probably less likely because we, we, it has to be legally, it has to pass the legal, the legal giggle test. And in this case, that test is really based around the modeling. So we're, we're working off of what Arch was able to model and demonstrate is viable. Because you can't, you can't expect that you can come in and set up a program that takes all of the residual profit. And that's what the range we're working in is Arch is modeling it, determining whether or not they, they think that this could pass legal challenge. And they have, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty good at this. They've got some really great economists working for them that, that do this on the national level and are pretty good at it. We're, we're confident in what they do and, and they're doing it for other cities as well. So I, 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 I trust them. They do represent the city in that regard.
My recommendation would be to build affordable houses, truly affordable houses. Select materials that will make them affordable. Select sizes. Adjust the design in a way that makes them truly affordable. But in, in my mind, to force someone to sell a million dollar house for $500,000, I don't think it would work on the long term.
But the city, city is not business to dictate what the developer is using to make a housing more affordable as far as the material.
So here we have the 80% to 120%. The 2023 income limit is going to be, so yeah. I think we had it at 80. So you know, the, the lower end limit, I think is how that works out is 158 to 20. And that's at 80% is the income for a three-person household. And then the rent for a three-person household at the 80% AMI is 3956. If that's right, Jeff, is, am I reading that right? Do you think the lower end of it, that's the 80% end is what those numbers are set at?
Right. Yeah, exactly. And it's, it's obviously easier to show this in terms of rent, right? Because there's a lot of factors that go into homeownership. But, um, you know, just kind of roughly, I'd say in the, depending on where interest rates are and down payments and so on. But you know, you're probably in the sick five to $600,000 range. Maybe a little higher.
That's only for King County. Outside King County may be different, right?
Absolutely. It really depends on the area you're in. There's a, there's a HUD has an income factor that you use to figure out what it is in that area.
So I want to step back just again. As Sean mentioned, and we've talked about this a little bit, your best guess is this would only apply to about 20% of the properties in Sammamish. And we don't have any really big chunks of land for large subdivision type activity.
So the, the fee in lieu, or the, excuse me, that the, the inclusionary affordability fee would apply if, if we were to do it because we can't exclude single family. It would apply, that you could have some specific carves out, carve-outs, but generally speaking, you can't uniformly exempt single family. It would apply across the whole city.
Right. But because of covenants.
Right.
A huge, that 80%, 75%.
Wouldn't be redeveloping. Yeah. Unless there's a vacant lot within one of those divisions or something, then it would apply. Yeah.
So we're looking mostly at small subdivision, small lot, unit lot, projects, infill.
A few vacant lots.
Yeah. So I certainly hear what you're saying about the affordability. But some point we've got to figure this, this out. So keeping the money within the city, I think is a really good idea. Because then the city could turn around and do bonus development over at the community college or wherever other city land or partner with someone. So, and the fee in lieu does give the owner, the developer some flexibility. They could either build it, which isn't too likely in these smaller unit developments. You can't build part of a unit. So the fee in lieu gives them and the city a way to move forward with creating some, probably not a lot, more affordable housing. I, I don't see another solution. And if we drop it all together, we're kind of stuck. We don't have many options. So it seems, at the minimum, we've got to go forward with something.
Another, another policy option that we've wrestled with and, um, you know, you all are doing a great job really hitting on all the key issues here and the things that we've been wrestling with as well. So I appreciate that. But one policy option would be to only allow the fee in lieu for fractional units. So if it was a larger scale project over 10 units and you could build that, um, you know, as part of the project. I mean, that, that's a, that's definitely a potential option. Where you're dealing with fractional units, obviously you have more limited options.
I also want to highlight that, you know, like getting it in place now allows us to come back and continue to tailor it. So one of the, one of the things we've been talking about is on our work plan in 2025. We've got some code updates that we know we're going to come back and work on when we're not in this sort of tunnel vision with the comp plan that we're working on. So, you know, we feel okay adopting something with, you know, it will have some impact on building. It will. People who are coming in with applications, you know, will, will be, but, but we also have the opportunity to fairly quickly in the new year, you know, sometime probably in the summer, if not the, started in the summer and end up in the fall and amend it. And, and that, that's going to be once we've, we've seen, you know, some of what other cities are starting to do and see, hear from the building community, see how HB 1110 plays out, study the case law, which is always an important one. And, and start to understand sort of where things are going. So we feel more comfortable adopting it with sort of where, where, where Arch recommends it, because we know we can then go back and amend it.
Have you heard anything from master builders?
Arch did provide their middle housing affordability report to master builders. And my understanding is that there was understanding, but concern. Master builders is, is behind affordable housing. They're supportive of affordable housing, but trying to understand how it's achieved. They, I don't think within master builders, they all agree. But, but it's, it's one, you know, that, that we, they, they want to partner with us and they want us all to figure it out. And, you know, maybe there's an opportunity in the new year for us to, to bring them in and work with them on that. Bring Arch in and work with them on that. And really double down on trying to, trying to turn the program into something that, that works on all sides.
I have just one question. To the, to the document that Evan was showing on the table. The way I read it was that, yeah, there we go. Moderate income, rent limit, three-person household is almost, almost $4,000. Right? So what we are saying is that we're targeting this for people to be able to pay $4,000 rent. And that's our 80% limit? Did I read that right?
That, that's the lower end limit, correct?
Wow. Okay.
You know, looking at that, since the extremely low is zero to 30% and it has the 39555, it would be zero if it's the lower limit. So I think, I think really what we should be looking at for the 80% is the 105 and the 2,000. But still, that's a lot of money.
That's a much more manageable number that I can read because if I, if I read the other one, it was like $4,000 rent.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I can just suggest this might be a follow-up item because we could dwell on it for a long time tonight. I do think that, I've thought this in the past, inevitably we all, as Jeff said, they use rent numbers because there's simpler math. But almost all of us think in terms of house purchase values. So somehow we got to figure out a reasonable way to translate between the two so that, because like when I see $4,000 a month rent, I agree with you AJ, it seems crazy. But if you told me that that was a $520,000 house, that still sounds expensive to an old guy like me. But, but at least I, I, that concept of what that means is much different than the rent. So I don't, we just probably in the future need to figure out our own way to translate that a little bit. And then I think we should maybe try to follow up on this just for the next discussion. Mike, did you have something?
Yeah, I was going to, just to kind of wrap around on trying to bring a little closure here. So I have to say, I had concerns and some like the unintended consequences. I could see this actually making housing more expensive. And it feels complex to me. However, the practical side of me recognizes what David just said, that this is the opportunity that we have to put this into the code. Otherwise we lose that. And the other part of me, although there are issues with Arch, there are economists and so forth that have looked at this carefully, more so than we can tonight. And so I, I put some trust in that, into that analysis. So, you know, if we, if we want to tweak a little bit around the possible exemptions, fine. But I think we should move ahead with this to get it in place, to recognize some of the desire of the council. And with the recognition that we're almost certainly going to have to do some tweaking as well as other communities having to do tweaking as this stuff starts to get implemented. I frankly, I think that the impact in Sammamish is going to be pretty minimal because of things that John had said and the complexity and so forth. However, um, you know, I think we should move forward and, and get this in places, at least as a holding pattern, if, if that's the right kind of phrasing.
The caveat, that could come back to us and then we can revisit it.
Almost certainly will have to as, as we all, and all the communities learn more about the impact of actually making more affordable housing, you know?
So this shows 2022, 80% was 107, 680. And the mortgage and rent for that was 2692 for a household size of four. We, if you scroll down, you can see examples of salaries in the city and where they fit in the income ranges. And we felt this was really compelling as you start to see that, you know, a large majority of, of city staff, you know, fire staff, teaching staff, um, fit in these income brackets. So that just sort of is trying to drive home where, where these people, you know, the roles these people play in the community. So anyway, sorry to interrupt. I just.
And we have to provide these people with housing within the community. We have to figure out a way to, to allow them to live within the community. But I'll, I'll keep going back. I was doing the math on the side with a five and a half interest over 30 years. On a $600,000 house, that's about what the 80% can afford. Going from today's prices to 600,000, that's not realistic. And that's why I keep going back to, let's think about building cottage houses, smaller houses, more affordable houses. Things that are truly affordable, but trying to push the 50 pounds into 10 pounds. I, I don't think that will work. And if we're going to move forward with it, I would at least remove the existing homes. I, I will limit it to developers. And when we come back next year to, to visit it, maybe at that time we bring the houses back. But at, but at the minimum, keep, limit it to developers.
Yeah, I agree. We definitely have to remove the existing homes out of this thing. Is why I think there's too many loopholes in there. And I agree with the, I think we should start with that graph, with that table that you put up over there of 80% with teachers and all, because we want those people in the, those professions in the community and not outside the community. So it makes sense to do it, but I think we should remove the existing homes in this because there's just a lot of loopholes in it.
Jeff, what was the reason that you cited as possible exemption, right? And taking the possible out? What's the justification?
Sorry, say that again?
What was justification of, you know, the, the exemptions? You're showing it as a possible exemption, right? An exemption.
I, I think Jeff, maybe just as a reminder for everybody, this is just sort of a conceptual, this is what we're thinking about proposing, but the actual details are a little ways away. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that's exactly correct. Um, we were just putting out some potential scenarios for exemptions, but, but haven't, you know, landed on anything. And certainly the conversation tonight's been helpful. And when we come back, uh, we'll have more specifics to, to talk through with you.
I think you've answered our questions this evening very well.
Yeah, I would just, I just want to wrap it up by saying a couple of things. One is, I'd encourage that as we go through this process, we think about who we might unintentionally harm and be careful about that. Set the dials appropriately. And what David said is really important, this, if this, which I didn't, I had lost track of. If this is something that the council is very interested in, then it's really important that we propose something to them as a starting point. Otherwise, if we don't do that, then they're, you know, going to start themselves in the dark. And that's not really what our, what we're here to do. We're here to help. So even, even though, you know, myself kind of disagrees with some aspects of this, it's still going to be far better that we propose something to the council that maybe is adjusted a bit to something we think we could live with to start out with. That's far, far, far better and is our, our obligation. And so that's what we should be working towards. So even though I was, was the contrarian, I do acknowledge that, that's what the council, as David said, has asked. So. All right, Jeff, maybe we should, or Tyler, I'm not sure, we should move on to what else we were going to talk about here.
Good.
Thanks Chair. Um, yeah, really appreciate the, the discussion there. You all have hit on many of the topics that we've grappled with, with that, with that concept. Moving on though, to a new topic that we have yet to discuss with you, this is included in the code and is a response, and a response to a new state law that was passed this last legislative session around co-living housing. So this is relatively straightforward, but it acknowledges that, um, you know, micro housing, small units that just have a living space, sleeping space and bathroom space can be much more affordable and certainly appealing to single occupants, maybe, maybe couples, um, provided that there's, there's shared, shared amenities, shared kitchen facilities, um, within the building. So the, the mandates in the bill are relatively straightforward. And that is that co-living housing, um, across all cities within Washington needs to be allowed on all lots that would otherwise allow for six units. And for the purposes of calculating density and parking, one co-living unit is meant to result in, or can only be counted as a quarter of a dwelling unit. So that's for the purposes of parking and density. For the building envelope itself, none of that will change under the draft code amendments to satisfy this bill. And we did pick up on a few kind of conflicting uses that exist in the code today, such as dormitory and senior assisted housing. And so we've made some changes to the definitions to those uses, for those uses, just to make a clear distinction between those uses and co-living housing. So with that, I'll pause and open it up for any questions or discussions on this topic.
Maybe before we let others go, is there a common kind of square footage definition that goes with this? I mean, maybe there's not, but you know, I'm trying to imagine you hear about people in New York or someplace that are living in a, you know, 150 square foot. I mean, what, what kind of, when we say a, I think it was sleeping and, and living, you know, and then some common shared spaces. What is, is there a common definition of what that means, sleeping and living piece of it? that means, sleeping and living piece of it?
Yes, and I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I believe it's around a hundred and twenty square feet. It is a number that's, that's controlled by the building code rather than the zoning code, but the law here that we're trying to implement does prohibit cities from putting limitations on that size, just because, you know, the intent of the bill is to really enable really small living spaces, not to the extent of unhealthy living scenarios, but to really let the building code dictate how small they can be, which is about, I think about a hundred and twenty square feet on the smaller end.
Okay. Who has questions? Ajay?
Sorry, I don't mean to keep struggling with this, but I'm, I am struggling with this thing. We are talking of micro housing. Isn't that, isn't that for a little more of a mature place? I mean, this, this would definitely work for like Seattle, it'll work for New York. Sammamish is not yet at that place. We don't have a town center, we don't have transit facilities. You cannot have micro housing without solving those problems. Are we trying to get all of these things done at one time or is this like a step by step?
I, I think that there's one word to answer that, mandate.
Okay. I thought you were going to say shut up, but that's okay.
And, and another thing just to point out, it's the first bullet here, but, but we're talking about a, a smaller subset of lots that would, you know, qualify under the mandate that would allow six plus units. So it's a little bit different than the middle housing applications.
Yeah, the, the, it's even more limited than where middle housing could apply in the city. I think more likely you'd see someone build maybe a smaller co-living building in one of our neighborhood business or community business zones, you know, adjacent to Pine Lake or, or Inglewood. And that might make sense there because there might be, you know, somebody who's working retail, who just wants a place to live and, you know, may, maybe they're in transition in life or maybe, maybe they like that lifestyle, you know, there's, there's a lot of positives, maybe not working so much or, or having a, a place to, to live that's much cheaper, where you don't have to work as much. But we, you know, we have a problem as a community where our retail workers don't live here. And in order for us to open a grocery store on a snowy day, it's a challenge. So, you know, these types of things, maybe there's, there's some benefit and if one of these came in, it would serve a purpose and fill a gap.
Absolutely. I completely agree that it'll solve the purpose and we, we can get down in that table that you showed about thirty to fifty and fifty to eighty percent. And we can make it really elegant and wonderful to work with, but what I'm saying is that we cannot do that without considering transit, without considering how we're going to improve people's way of moving in and around the city. We can't take this in vacuum is what I'm saying.
Oh, absolutely. And I think one of the things we're really doing with this comp plan is we're looking to the future. We're really trying to create, you know, pun intended, a roadmap towards the future that shows how people get around, how everything works and we're, you know, the next phase of, of planning in the city that you're all going to be part of, hopefully is going to be something along the lines of a centers and corridors study, where we start to understand all these relationships and how to, how to make it all happen.
So this mandate that you're talking, this mandate, the one word answer that you gave me, does this mean that this can happen at twenty thirty-four while we do the rest of it earlier? Is what I'm trying to get to?
No, it means that we have to have this in our code in order to respond to the legislature's requirement.
Okay.
We don't anticipate that it will be that attractive and something that will really take off. Maybe once the, I, I think that actually you're hitting on something that the market actually will want it once we have those services. So once we have a lot of transit, we have a lot of buses coming up and down the hill and moving around, you could get down to light rail and you wanted to live up here in Sammamish and easily get down to the light rail station, not have a car, you know, live adjacent to Inglewood or Pine Lake or something, the market might build that then. But right now, I don't think the market's going to build it.
Exactly. That's exactly what I thought. South Sammamish Park and Drive, let's just take that example. If I had a bus going eight, once every eight minutes down towards the transit center and down towards Sound Transit, and then from there I have trains going up, up and down all the time, this will be a roaring hit. But without those things, we will just build this and this will be empty because nobody will want to come and work, live here. And I don't understand what we are trying to solve by doing this thing.
Aside from meeting state law, right now, I, I think this will just sit idle. It'll be a good thing to have once that happens and we'll probably then turn the dials to, to try and really make it attractive, but right now this is really a compliance thing.
So this is one of those issues that we may be able to learn from others and I'm looking specifically at David. Bellevue had this problem where investors were chopping up houses to create these co-living arrangements by Bellevue College. So we can look to others to see how they manage this stuff as it evolved.
I believe that the city of Redmond has one of these. We, some of us, I don't know who you were at that Archer, one day conference that they arranged, the building, the building is actually in a good part, is high rise building is exactly what we were talking about. And everybody's happy. The only thing is that, that there is a combination office space down first floor and then the rest is co-housing all the way six floors. It's a beautiful building.
The, the building we were in, yes, that was a beautiful building, but what I'm still struggling with, when, when we come up with options that are not truly options, it's an option that I can check the box and say, state, I met your mandate. Here, I'm giving you an option, but it's truly not an option. The market will not respond to tiny houses in Sammamish. Sammamish is different than Seattle. It's different than Redmond. If, if we take solutions that worked for those communities and we think they will work here, yes, we will check the box, but, but they won't work. I, I'm sure we all have been to doctors' offices and to put things in perspective, a hundred and twenty square feet, that's an exam room. Again, so you, you know how small those and you have all been there, that, that's an exam room. So if we are truly trying to provide houses for the people in the list we just looked at, those peoples, they, they have families, they have spouses, they have kids. If we give them a hundred and twenty square feet, yes, we will check the box, but we are not truly giving them a space where they can live. The one in Redmond where we went to, I know it's co-housing, whatever they called it, but I don't think it's, it's like this. I, I believe it's more like apartments. And that's what I had in mind when I kept saying, we need to build them something affordable. Build them an apartment building, build them a four story building with apartments that are not as fancy as the two million dollar homes. This way the builders can sell them or rent them at an affordable price, but.
My office is just under that size. Okay, anybody else? Okay, Tyler or Jeff? Tyler, I think you had it.
Thank you. So another new topic, it's included in the red lines tonight, a bill that was passed this session around parking flexibility. So this generally recognizes the, the cost and space that's required for parking, especially off, off street. And in this new bill, cities cannot require that parking off street be enclosed, so that's like in a carport or garage. It also allows cities or requires cities to allow tandem parking to count toward the parking requirements at a rate of one, one stall per twenty linear feet. And then there's a, there's a couple mandates regarding the dimensional requirements around parking, which the city, you know, of course is regulated in the past, the width and length of stalls. And again, to just cut down on the footprint of parking and then, you know, the, the materials that are typically used to, to create parking stalls. So limiting the width to eight feet in this circumstances is in the bill. And then to provide some, some cheaper options for the surface, including grass pavers and other pervious surfaces that actually help advance other, you know, city goals such as the detention of stormwater and things of that nature. So pretty straightforward requirement, also state mandate, but also, you know, aligns with many of the, the, the goals and values in the comp plan.
Go ahead, say it.
The, the dimension eight by twenty, is that a mandate?
Yes.
That is surprising because as all we know, these days, almost seventy-five percent of the vehicle, private, privately owned vehicles, they're no longer passenger cars, it's SUV. And SUV requires wider parking space and a longer, and I'm surprised that they mandated to reduce it. I looked at the couple of cities in here, Issaquah and Redmond, they have eight foot, nine foot, and nine and a half foot width. And you may argue that these guidelines that I saw, there's probably before this mandate became effective, but I'm so, so much concerned about the, the width of the parking space to be eight feet.
Yeah, it, it is definitely tight. You know, eight feet is more typical for an on-street stall, but for off-street, you know, you're typically looking at nine feet or at least eight and a half feet. So understand your concern, but there's limited flexibility.
But also it says may not, so it means that the city can, can.
They can build a bigger stall if they want to, right? It just means that, that we, we can't require them to build a bigger stall than that.
Yeah. Yeah. And the same thing with the amount, the amount of parking in general, there are some limits, you know, related to requirements, but essentially that just creates basically a market based system where those that are doing development, you know, are able to, to choose the amount of parking that works for their site.
Dave, right now, can you comment on the flexibility as, as for the surface? Do we allow gravel parking?
We currently do not. Well, because gravel is, is considered to be, you know, it's not an ADA approved surface, it's not, it's something that is still considered to be impervious unless constructed a certain way with a certain underlayment. And, and it's something that, that is just, you can use gravel as a, as a, as a parking surface if it's built and engineered a certain way. You can't just pour down a bunch of gravel. You have to show that you've, you know, you've properly compacted, properly layered, you've got your geotextile fabric in there, you've got your drain course in there, that you have an underdrain in there and, you know, it also has to be connected to water quality because it's a pollution generating surface. So there's a lot of things that go into gravel as compared to asphalt and most people opt to just not build it because it's just easier to build a pervious surf, an impervious surface.
So gravel, gravel surface is not impervious?
Gravel surface is considered to be impervious unless constructed a certain way, using certain types of angular rock that allow water to percolate down through it.
Some of this feels like a bit of a, you know, we're moving backward to now we're going to have houses with carports like it was in the fifties, but, but that's the mandate, that's the mandate.
Okay, let's, let's jump back into the middle housing overlay and we have a, a slide here with more detail on the cottage housing opportunities that we've drafted for the middle housing overlay number one, which applies just to our one district, recognizing the need to provide more opportunity for more housing and not just simply limit development in R one to three or four units on a lot. And so brought this at a fairly conceptual level to you. The last time we met, it's been refined quite a bit in the code. And you'll notice that this particular section of code has a lot more bells and whistles compared to the rest of the middle housing overlays. And that's because this is in some cases going beyond the requirements of eleven-ten. So we can get really prescriptive about the, the regulations of, of the space, the law, the, the common areas, the yards, et cetera, really with an attempt to establish super livable, green, co-living communities, excuse me, cottage, cottage communities such as the one on the bottom right. And there's many, many great examples of these across the PJs Sound, which have drawn lots of inspiration for us. Now, we talked a little bit about the, the kind of parent lot size requirements last time, in this draft landing on three acres as a requirement for the, the maximum lot area for these to happen. And then allowing anywhere between four and twelve small cottage units per cluster. And then also using hardscape coverage, so this is inclusive of all walkways, buildings, porches, driveways, parking areas on the site to forty percent of the site area. Just pointing out a couple other new changes to this to respond to planning commission and staff's interest in making this not only a, a workable tool to, to provide opportunities to work around site constraints with, with tricky like grade changes and trees. We've, for that reason, introduced two types of cottages and two sets of regulations to really allow sites the maximum flexibility of, of different types of units. There's also some added application requirements for cottage housing in the draft, such as a tree plan and, and an illustrative site plan, just to give staff and the director, you know, a better sense of how this site is working out, how the buildings are related to one another, how trees are retained. Right, lots of details on the, on the cut sheets here. I trust that you've, you've had the chance to look a little bit through them and we can, we can certainly hit on any of the, of the new standards that are in the red line draft or just general questions.
So one, one question I have, Tyler, is there were, I had a few comments about some of this, not just this specific topic, but several. Commissioner Briscoe had a bunch of good comments. There were actually some pretty good comments, I shouldn't say it that way, there were, there were good comments from a couple of people in the community. Are, are you guys going to follow up with those somehow to let us know, you know, how you respond to them? I mean, there's some of these that I'm curious about, but if you say, oh, we're going to create a list and respond to those or we're going to do it some, then, you know, then that's fine because a lot of them are just particular items. So I'm just curious how you're going to respond to questions.
Yeah, we, we, we discussed that earlier. I don't know if we have settled on an exact format, but we will be following up in writing and potential, you know, small meeting if we need to. But yeah, we'll be following up on the more fine grain comments here shortly with written responses.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
That, that's great because there were a lot of like little details that seemed like they'd take forever in, in the meeting here. So, but I had one and it's really about, and I think it ties into this whole affordability. Do the, the conversations that you all have had and building off of what we've discussed, what I'd like to hear is that these codes, what's in here, is really going to make it desirable to build the middle housing and especially the cottage housing. And if there's any kind of trade-offs that you are playing with, that again, turning the dials, that can make these either more or less desirable to build and therefore more or less affordable. So could, Jeff, could you or Tyler talk a little bit about that, which is a little bit broader than like, is it five feet or ten feet if there's an alley included kind of thing?
Yeah. So I think, you know, part of it is looking at the option of developing under the base zoning, you know, with the middle housing allowances that apply per lot. And when you apply that, you know, on a one acre lot, you're still only getting to maybe three or four units an acre. You know, you can build larger units, of course, but, you know, in the, in the cottage development, you could get significantly more units in a very high quality and kind of unique sort of neighborhood environment with cottage housing. So I am feeling, you know, fairly hopeful that, that this will be a, a sort of a home run for Sammamish and something that we've spent a lot of time to really come up with a solution that is specific to what is somewhat unique of having a one acre zoning district. And we're sort of able to retain those characteristics while implementing cottage housing in a way that can protect trees, deal with stormwater, create community, give options for people that are looking for a different housing type to stay. options for people that are looking for a different housing type to stay within the community. So, again, this is something we can tweak over time, but I have, I am feeling confident that this, you know, will be an attractive solution for, for certain folks developing in Semamish in that area.
That's good to hear. And as I was looking through, and there's a lot of detail, and, you know, I don't have the, the time or the expertise that you all had, that was kind of the sense that I had, that these were, in general, pretty workable solutions. You know, for example, setbacks looked reasonable, they weren't too big, too small, that kind of stuff. So it felt like there were good trade-offs being made. And so I appreciate hearing from you that you think that this could be, be positive for Semamish.
Yeah, absolutely. And in places where I've seen it implemented, including some of the cities I've worked for, you know, in a very similar way, just the exponential number of units that you can do versus the base zoning seems to be attractive. And they're, they're very sought after, they tend to sell fairly quickly and kind of retain their ownership longer term.
One, one other thing with this, the R1 and the MHO1 cottage housing was, we're trying to mitigate against the push for rezoning from R1 and seeing other bigger buildings and densities. And we think this, this, we've talked to a few builders about this, and they really like this idea. And they, we feel like they indicated that they would likely stick with the zoning they had if they were allowed to do something like this. And we also feel it's a product that the Semamish community really would, would be interested in. We've heard a lot about it, and it'll, it provides a really great product for the community. So we like this option.
One little comment is that because of that, and because this seems much more likely to be something that might actually happen, I'd be curious to maybe, as this moves along, have a little discussion about what if this is a sloped lot or an irregular-shaped lot, or what are some of the implications? Because that, that image and that, and that picture all look fantastic, you know, but what, what happens when that doesn't work out quite that well? Are there other things we need to think about or not? I think that's just worth at least, in this case, talking about since it's likely to happen.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a couple of comments on that, because we've been thinking about that as well, right? There's a lot of different configurations. You could have a square lot, you could have kind of a, a long rectangular lot with a road on, you know, one of the frontages. So there's a lot of different conditions, and I think some of that will impact how you can lay out the sort of primary open space with which the cottages are typically organized around. So that's one thing. The other, I think, tension is where you have buildings that are fronting on the open space, but also fronting on a primary or side street and how you deal with that. So you don't end, end up sort of looking at the backs of homes. And I think through just some kind of simple architectural kind of detailing and landscaping and how you arrange parking, you can do, you could, I think, achieve good outcomes. But, but that's definitely something that we've been trying to focus on. And, you know, in a code, it's difficult to, to sort of account for every scenario in a very specific way. But we are looking at some standards that can deal with some of those varied conditions, for sure, and perhaps allow some flexibility, right? Maybe we wanna allow an exception to something if it's gonna preserve, you know, a large tree or something like that. I think some of those trade-offs with this model can be really powerful and create a better outcome.
Anybody else? Sayed?
Couple of questions, and a setback, Jeff. Let's talk about the streets. One is called primary streets, the other one is called side streets. When we talk about a setback, should that be reflective of the functional classification of those roadways? The setback on a collector and arterial should be more than a setback on a residential street?
I would say, yeah. I would say that that is a potential option, but I don't think something that Semamish has looked at.
But wouldn't it make sense to you that, that the setback should be reflective of the functional classification of a bad industry?
I think it could, but I think in, in a situation where it's relatively low-volume residential streets, that might not be as important. And the other thing is, you know, you sort of have a trade-off because if you're on a corner lot, you have two front setbacks essentially, and under the current code, they're the same. And then you get, you know, side setbacks on the other side, so you don't technically have a rear setback. So there's a little bit of a flexibility there. It's certainly something we can look at. I think it would depend on the situation. The cottage housing applies to a pretty specific area of the city, so we could take a look at the streets and see if we would recommend, you know, any of that. You know, I, I do think, in the case of a busier street, you might want either a heavier setback or a little bit more of a landscape buffer. So that's something we can take a look at. It's, it's not included in the code right now, but we'll take a look.
Also, what is the limit? What is a, what is the delineation of the setback? Let me give you an example. Let's say that you have a street that you have an easement, a utility easement or any other easement. Is the setback, is it gonna be from the back of that easement or easement? It wouldn't include it?
It would be, if the easement is for like part of the street, right? Like the street right away is not...
Not necessarily.
Right, right. My point is if, if there's an easement that's serving as part of the, essentially the public right-of-way, the setback would start at the edge of the easement, is, is my interpretation of that.
And the hardscape and the landscape would be part of the setback or that's in addition?
It would be based on the entire site area.
From the prop, from the property line?
Yeah, from the property line, yep. Thank you.
Anyone else? Isham?
Do you wanna do a motion to extend?
Oh, yeah. Do I want to? Should probably ask that a different way. Somebody wanna go ahead?
How many more, how much more content do we have before we figure if it's 15 or 30 minutes?
I think they will certainly go quicker than the first slide, but I think we're maybe only... No, I, I meant to say that in a positive way. We have, I think, four or five more slides, and I think they'll be, they'll be a little bit quicker. We could, we could try to, yeah.
I move that we extend till nine o'clock.
Second, it's been moving to second to extend to nine. Those in paper say aye. Aye. I oppose no, thank you. Okay, let's see some more of those great slides you were talking about.
Okay. Now, thinking about the, the middle housing overlay as a whole, not just, not just one, two, three, but all of them. Making use of the work that was done during the development regs update for Phase One, which is done in the past couple of years, the city and consultant team developed a dynamic setback system for R4 and R6. And so these setbacks, rather than being evenly applicable to all development, correspond to the size of the home. As we initially drafted the, the middle housing overlay, we, we kind of established new rigid setbacks that weren't really based on anything other than kind of like the, the smallest setbacks that were part of the base zoning to begin with. Now, in this draft, we reference, down here, refer to the underlying zone in table right here, where these dynamic setbacks are established for, or based on the, the building size. So this, again, is just kind of to provide some more mitigation to larger structures being required to be a little bit farther from the street and from the side lot lines, but also providing, you know, flexibility for smaller units, which is the direction this code is moving in, you know, really probably likely being around the, the dynamic setbacks in this topmost category of buildings that are less than 2,500 square feet, perhaps in this area here, buildings between 25 and 4,000 square feet.
Yeah, so this, this essentially helps address the sort of compatibility between properties and zones and scales of development. As you can see in the strike draft, we changed homes to buildings because now, under the middle housing framework, there could be, you know, multiple buildings on site. And as Tyler said, if you want to use the smaller setbacks, you have to have smaller buildings. So it, again, is another layer of kind of control on scale. And I believe there was some concern in some of our earlier proposals around some of the setbacks, so hopefully this addresses it. It does, of course, make it a bit more limiting in terms of the options with the larger setbacks, but it provides kind of a gradient of options for folks, so.
John has a question.
So the switch from homes to buildings, and at the last meeting afterwards, Dave and I were talking about, you know, trying to think of all of the ways that this might not work out as we intended. And so, I own a primary parcel, I split off a uniparcel, sell it to my neighbor, and my neighbor builds an auxiliary building, like a garage or a shop or something other than a home. Does that, where does that fit or not fit in all of this?
Yeah. So that would fit under the first category where it says buildings less than 2,500 square feet. So, just to give a scenario, let's say you had a 3,000-square-foot home that was built. You'd have to comply with the setbacks in the middle category. But if you had, say, a 2,000-square-foot home and a 1,000-square-foot ADU, you know, both of those could utilize the setbacks in the upper category. So essentially, if you have a bigger building, you gotta have bigger setbacks. If you just choose to, to develop multiple smaller buildings, then you get the benefit of the smaller setbacks.
And I'll add that we are also incentivizing, ADUs are not shown on this, but ADUs have a much smaller setback. So they're way smaller in size, and they have a much smaller setback than even the 2,500-square-foot category. So that's one way to try to provide additional flexibility for ADUs.
At the same time, the building could be any use that's legal.
Correct.
More form-based at that point.
Yeah, more form-based, but I think, you know, the limits on square footage sort of, you know, provide a more limited number of options in terms of the use. But yes, you're, you're correct. It could be a duplex or it could be a single-family home or any of the other allowed uses.
Sayed, did you have something?
Yeah, two, two questions. Question number one, why we don't see for R1 or R8 as far as the minimum, minimum yard, front yard and side yard and so forth? And also with R8, why we don't see the numbers?
We do, it's just at the top. So the R1 and R8 just have prescriptive setbacks that apply to everything, and they're rela, at least in the case of the R1, they're relatively large. So, you know, if you could, you know, and this was one of the issues that was brought up, you know, what if you're in an R4, say, which has a little bit more allowances for middle housing and you're adjacent to an R1, right? So in the R4, let's say you had a 3,000-square-foot home, you'd have to be 10 feet from the side yard, and on the R1 lot, they'd have to be 25 feet away. So you're essentially looking at 35 feet distance between buildings. You know, it's a pretty good distance and provides some separation.
And I hope I'm the only one that's confused. What is the difference between minimum front yard set, front yard minimum and a setback? Is that the same word? Because in here, we're showing 15, we just talked about the five and 10.
It's the same. And the issue there is, you can see where it says minimum, it offers one number, so it must be that. So your building must be 15 feet. Whereas when the council was going through this back in 2019, I think is when we adopted this, they wanted to see an average. So what they said for the other ones, where it doesn't say minimum, is it offers an average, and then it states a minimum down below it. So that was the case of where buildings have articulation in the rear and they, they're not, everything's not square, and so they wanted to offer some flexibility, except for, you know, in some cases, the front yard. Generally, the front yard, where there was no flexibility, but smaller buildings, there was limited flexibility with the size because you're down to the five minimum anyway.
David, I'm sure that you've seen the, the houses in Issaquah, the Isco Highlands, and they're so popular. Most of the homes are actually, but the, the back of the sidewalk, there is not really front setback. Is that something that we're looking at as a possibility for R1 or R6?
Planned unit development.
Is that, is that what it is?
Yep.
Anybody else?
Chair, if I, if I could just add one more point to potentially discuss this evening is the, the responsiveness to alleys was something that we included prior to pointing in the code to these existing dynamic setbacks, which do not change based on the existence of an alleyway. And so as you can see here, you know, 15 to 12, or 15 feet, 20 feet, 25 feet, irregardless of the presence of an alley. We're not suggesting that alleys are required, but there is still a layer here to consider when there is an alleyway, we would recommend less of a, or a smaller rear yard setback, recognizing that the lot can be accessible from the rear. And in order to minimize the, the impervious surface, et cetera, and expand the buildable surface for homes, maybe think about shrinking that if the alleyway is present.
Nobody's jumping in. I guess one comment I might have about that is I'd wanna consider whether by reducing the rear because of the alley, the focus of the property now is on the front. Maybe the front should increase? Or, I'm just trying to think about, you know, rather than just make it smaller all of a sudden because you put an alley in. So if you have an alley, you don't have a backyard, so you might want the front yard to be more of the focus. I don't know, that, it just seems like there may be some give and take there.
In a typical R4 and R8, who makes the call as far as if it is gonna be an alleyway or not? The developer?
Developer would. However, I have to say that there's a workaround in this right-of-way that I, that I would see is that you just simply, instead of creating an alley, you create an easement down the center line, and then the, that, the setback is measured off the property line, not, not the easement line. So, an alley can be placed either in a tract or an easement. And if you did it by way of easement, you could then reconfigure it in that way. So there is already a workaround. I think it is a good question about if we were gonna create an alley tract, which for ownership purposes from the city's perspective is always better. Easements end, end up in disputes, that's just what happens. So we, we, you know, that, maybe there is opportunity to just to say that the, the setback is measured from the center line of an alley. That's something that would work.
Also, the question of the alleyway, is there any some fire codes that the fire department would require the dedication of?
No, the fire department just requires adequate width, either through easement or, or dedication of tract. Either, it can either be right-of-way, a tract, or an easement. Fire department's happy as long as it is appropriately surfaced, graded, and, and striped, right? Unobstructed, appropriately surfaced and graded, and has to have the 20,000 pounds per square inch of bearing capacity for, for the operational area.
Regardless of the heights of the building, how many floors?
Well, there's a whole bunch of other factors that are going into play there. The width is generally dictated by that, and they have to have their, their lay-down area and all the stuff that goes along with it. So it's, it's not always a symmetrical equation. There's a lot of factors.
My understanding was that there's fire code requirements that they, they wanted to have access both ways, from the street as well as the alleyway, in the case of serving...
Yeah, they, that's usually based on hose haul. So, so long as you can get the, the hose around the building, then, then that changes things. If you have one long building, then the challenge becomes that you need access from all sides because the hose haul won't allow you to get around the building.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not seeing any? Go ahead, Tyler.
Okay. Now, just sharing a few clarifications on the use of subdivision and unit lot division within the middle housing overlay. So we've discussed the concept of unit lot, not only tonight, but in past nights, lots of great comments about that. This evening, we just wanted to clarify that for the purposes of calculating density, whether you're doing a short plat, a unit lot division, a long plat, the density requirements and dimensional standards will be based on the parent lot. So that's the original lot before it's subdivided. And that, there, there were some concerns, I guess, along those lines, that by using unit lot division in the middle housing overlay... unit lot division in the middle housing overlay, we would see this exponential increase in density. And so hopefully those, that clarification about how density is calculated is kind of calmed by, by this realization. David and Jeff, I'm not sure if we have other points to point, or points to raise on this, but open to questions as, as always.
I, I think just one thing I would add, it was brought up earlier, sort of the notion of someone creating child lots and then selling them, you know, before the development actually occurs. And that's interesting. I hadn't really thought about that approach. I think that's something we'll consider, but I think more likely a developer's going to develop the whole site and then, you know, sell the unit with the lot at the same time, sort of like a townhouse development.
I have heard comment, just in, in meeting with people and talking to people, that there is concern about the multiplication of units. So we were wanting to be really careful here about making sure that you can't take a, take a lot, divide a lot, and then now you're allowed to then re-divide it again down the line. So what we're trying to do is, is also understand sort of what is the maximum end goal you can get to through, through application of a, or in conjunct, the combination of a, of a unit lot division and middle housing, and really wanting to make sure we're very clear about that in the code, so that right away, we understand what is the maximum you could get to. Because we don't want people to think on speculation, because we get a lot of complaints. So I thought I could do this. Well, you thought, but we want to be clear. So that's why we added those numbers to the table, you know, what the, what the maximum density could be. And I, I'd hope that we can put an example in here that might be a good way to do it, like we've done for some of our other density calculation code sections, where we provide an example. So I think that helps drive home what, what, what's allowed.
Remind me, how does this tie back to the six, 6,000 square foot per lot? Are these lots 6,000 square feet, or?
So these would not have a lot, lot size restriction. You can make it as small as you wanted to, it's on you. However, it floats within the parent lot. It's a lot like a binding site plan. So you're able to create a discrete piece of property that's defined, that you can buy or sell with a house on it, that, that floats within a jointly or commonly owned property, that you now have a partnership on, on owning and the obligation to maintain the balance of the property.
Yeah. And, and you have to do that in a way that you're consistent or meeting the requirements of the parent lot, right? So one of our options for middle housing is the detached configuration. So you have, would have to meet the separation between buildings, your exterior setback, so on and so forth. Those all apply, and will impact how the unit lots are sort of laid out.
This is one of the reasons why we said earlier that we feel less, I want to say, of, of an urgency to create a planning development, because this is largely achieving what a planning development achieves.
So when we look at these two exhibits, the shaded area, I'm assuming that is a vehicular access and a parking? Is that what it's supposed to represent?
Conceptually, yes.
The one on the top, the one on the top, it shows vehicular access for a single family is going to be from the street. The one on the bottom, it's going to be vehicular access from the alleyway. Is that right?
Yes.
So the shaded area defines both vehicular access as well as parking, right?
Right. And it's purely conceptual, not a requirement by any means for an alleyway in, in these circumstances.
Could, you, you could add that, the lower one, you could also move that, that grayed-out area up above to the upper one, and you could see those attached units maybe also taking access from the alley, and maybe they have like a tuck-under garage. I think in the detached unit example below, you're going to probably see more of a consolidated parking area with a walk-up. You know, that, that's, one of the things with, with these units is finding ways to bring the costs down. So we're also now working with Public Works to start to look at the Public Works standards that go hand in hand with these. They're going to be a little later, we're probably going to get to those in about February when those get adopted. But until then, we'll do what we have to do. This is the point where you just have too much work. And so, so the challenge is, is that we're wanting to find ways to allow cottage housing, middle housing to be built, where there's a lesser standard, not building a public road. There's a loop, one-way loop, a woo nerf, or whatever you want to call it, where there's a different standard internal to the, the unit lot division, because it's not really a public road. It's a, you know, it's a private development, and, you know, you, you've probably been to places like Suncadia, or down to, in Bend, what's the place near Bend, that's the touristy area just outside of Bend, Sun River.
Sun River.
And, you know, you see, you see a lot of those types of developments where there's like a lane, single one-way lane, and there's pull-off parking, and ways to walk up from there. And that's sort of the standard you're probably going to see with these, so that there's less impervious, there isn't as much right-of-way. I mean, we don't need more roads to maintain, but we do need roads. So trying to figure out how to make it all work.
Think we can go on to the next one, Tyler?
Yep. Two more slides. Thanks for bearing with us. First, just revisiting the rezone process. Not a lot of new information to share here, other than the, the red lines in the draft before you. So this is now proposed to be a quasi-judicial process that would go to either city council or the hearing examiner, and be evaluated against the criteria listed here. But largely, you know, designed to make use of the flexibility provided in the future land use map, where if a property is within the same future land use designation, say you're an R1, well, actually, maybe not for tonight, we'll use R6 as an example, because of the abatement rezoned that we talked about with R1. But if we, if you had an R6 property, and you were adjacent to an R8, that's in the same future land use designation as neighborhood residential. So that would be one of the criteria that you'd fulfill here. And then it would ultimately be up to, to the city council to enable that rezone request.
There, there has been comment in meetings I've had with, with community members, neighbors, you know, people up in the, that are interested in this, that this should be limited to, or the, the conversation led to the, the idea that this should be limited to a step up in one, one zone. So if you had R1, you could go to R4. If you had R4, you could go to R6. So an alternative requirement could be is that the subject property is limited to one step in zoning with a rezone process. Now, you could argue that if you're on an arterial, and you're, you're, you know, in an R1, that maybe you should be upzoned to more than that. So, so I think one, it's a question to the commission is, is that something you think is appropriate? What do you think, or criteria or limit should be for rezoning? And, and, you know, it's, we're, we're concerned about impacts from rezoning. And we want to, we, we understand that it's important for capacity, and that rezoning is, is part of the bigger picture. And we're definitely in favor of rezoning activity in the city, but we want to make sure it's happening in the right place and at the right levels. So we're interested in feedback on that.
So when we're talking about rezoning, we're talking about residential rezoning?
Correct. R1, R4, R6, R8.
Not changing from residential to commercial?
Absolutely, correct.
Okay, thank you.
With your thought, Dave, that if you are adjacent to an arterial, maybe you go two steps up. So if the backside of one of these properties, let's say, is 228, and it's currently R1, maybe it makes sense to, to go two steps up to allow more volume. But I cannot just throw a blanket here and say, yes, it will apply to all of them. Maybe we, we give the director that.
Case by case.
Yeah, exactly, to do a case by case.
So we would be making recommendation to the decision maker. It'd be a quasi-judicial process, and it would be the hearing examiner's what we're recommending. And then the hearing examiner would hold a hearing, could take feedback, and could decide based on that at that point.
I mean, I guess I, I, the feedback would be similar to this, you know, the standard should be that adjacent parcels with different zones should never be more than one step apart, unless it's intentional for some reason. Now, you know, that's easy to say and hard to create code that, you know, describes that. But in general, you want that smooth transition, except at certain places where it's intentional, like a center, town center, or along an arterial. So if we could create a couple of criteria that allow variance from that, but otherwise, to me, it seems like it should always just be one step in any boundary between, you know, two parcels. So if the clever people that write stuff can write that down, that'd be my feedback.
So, so in that case, if you had an R1, and you had another R1, the option would then be to go up to R4, and it would then only allow that one step difference in between it. But if you had an R1 next to, and it was in our, in our, in our eight, we had an R1 and R1 and R8, well, going to R4, I guess, would still fit in between there. So yeah, I see what you're saying. We'll, we'll try and work on that criteria. I think that's, that's good feedback. And I think that addresses what the community concern was. It also addresses the interest that we have in wanting to put density in the right place.
Anybody else? Nope, okay.
Okay. Last topic this evening, back to the bonus parcel discussion. So this set of regulations, which provides more development opportunity based on the ownership of a parcel, limiting it to religious-owned land and public entity-owned land, allowing some increases in heights to enable, you know, lower-cost construction of, of low and mid-rise buildings. Now, due to the distribution of the, of lands owned by a religious or city or public entities, in some cases, being in residential areas, we've been really careful about writing some regulations to help mitigate the, the jump in scale that would occur if one of those properties were to take advantage of this opportunity. And so we had a good discussion about this last time, and thinking about if, if the parcel in question abuts an R-zone parcel, that's anything between R1 and R8, in that case, the upper story setback, a single upper story setback of 30 feet for any, any building height above three stories is, is one of the approaches that we've drafted for mitigation purposes. Similarly, the dynamic setbacks that were referenced earlier, if the zone, or if the parcel in question is zoned, you know, R4, R6, they'd have to accommodate the dynamic setbacks based on building size. That's another way to enable a little bit more transition space. And then finally, type 2 landscaping would be required for, for projects in, under these provisions as well. So this is our last topic. We can take questions and discussions here, and then also recognize that it's, it's the end, so we can hit on some more general things if, if the planning commission has other, other items to bring up.
One more thing to add to that is that, so thinking about this, you, you could have a 35-story, or 35, sorry, 35-foot building along the property line anyway, under the regula, the R-zone, the residential zone. So what you're seeing here is, under, that A setback is going to be the dynamic setback that applies to the building. And then the C is what that additional setback is that allows that relief, once you get above what would otherwise be allowed for any home to be built in that zone. So, so the, the wall along the property line is never going to be bigger than what could otherwise be built by, by anybody building a single-family home there anyway. And that's the approach we took.
Yeah. Does it actually say that? Because that was one of my written comments, but that sort of presumes that each of those floors is 10 feet, but it doesn't say that. So I don't, I'm not sure how.
We could, we could write that into 35. We could add another arrow going up to the, to the, to that B. I guess B would be 35 feet.
Yeah, it might be just worth thinking about some numbers instead of stories, because sometimes that can be manipulated.
Yep. What is the definition of the dynamic setback? What is the difference between setback and dynamic setback?
Dynamic setback was the one we looked at earlier, that had the minimum, and then it had the aver, the, the average, right? So if we go back to that chart right there, it's that box, that's the dynamic setback. And what that means is that it's dynamic to the building size.
So can we say variable setback instead of dynamic? Variable puts, puts things in a quantitative terms.
Yeah, I agree. Because a dynamic setback seems like it's something that's changing often. The variable setback, this feels like I could not map it to this thing until you brought it back to this thing, so.
Any other comments about that last item with the step back?
I think what I want to know is, what's going on with that electrical service box? Because that's, I can't get over that. It's massive.
You never know. No. You can see it coming from up above and coming down. Okay. That's where they plug the massive generator in when the power goes out. So Tyler, do you have more? Or are we just open for general questions from everybody?
That's right. That's it, Chair. Open for general questions.
One thing which may get resolved later, this was in my written comments too, but it was sort of a general thing, is we use amenity space a few places. And I would really, we don't need to go through it here, especially with time, but I would like to make sure that it's clear what that means within the code, or it's referenced someplace, which maybe I just didn't know where to look. Because there's a big difference with if amenity space is a, is a grass lawn with a couple of nice plantings, or if it's two pickleball courts, or if it's, right, what does that actually mean? And how does it apply to impervious surface and all that kind of stuff? I just want to make sure that that's thought through and defined, well-defined.
Yeah, that's a great point. We will, we'll do that.
Sayed, do you have any?
Just a comment and a question. The comment is that, that both Jeff and his group, as well as the staff, they have done tremendous amount of work on this, and I want to thank you. These graphics really helps us a lot to understand complex issues related to land use. And thank you, David, and thank you to consultant, and Jeff and his group. The question that I have, maybe his question or a requirement, it would really make sense when you guys, you bring some of these numbers. Would it be possible to bring what you have right now versus what you're proposing? Is it too much of work? So we have a better understanding, okay, we go from 15-foot setback to the 20-foot setback. Is that something that you can work it out, to the extent possible?
So I think it's, it was in the, so you're talking about what the code says today versus what?
Right, in general, right.
So, yeah, so it was in the packet.
I'm not talking about any specific chart. I'm talking about in general, when you bring some numbers that reflects what, what staff and the consultant is proposing, it would be nice to see, okay, right now, this is what the code is.
In many cases, we don't, we don't have the code today, because the middle housing doesn't exist in our code. So it's all new. These are new numbers.
Right. But those that we do have in the code, for instance, I don't know what would be a good example, let's say parking requirement, pick up that as an example. That right now, this is what we have right now, and now we're proposing to make the changes. It would be nice to put things in perspective.
I think I understand, yeah.
To the extent.
I believe at an earlier meeting, we, we did that, and we might be able to just refresh it with where we're at in the current draft. But my recollection is that, I'm not sure if it was last meeting or a few meetings ago, but we, we had done that, and certainly we can provide that going forward.
It would be nice to have it side by side, if it is possible.
Yeah. And I, and I would say, you know, a lot of the existing standards have not changed a lot, just in general, but there definitely are some that have. And so we can highlight those for you.
So all these red texts that I see, these are all new, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. Okay. So we'll wrap it up, and I would echo Sayed's comments. This is good stuff and a lot of work put into it, and, and some of these are a little bit challenging topics. So thank you, guys. So thank you, guys. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, the only thing we have left is public comment. Agenda-related public comment. So if somebody wants to extend the meeting for public comment, you can do that. And if you just refuse, then we'll move on.
Maybe ten minutes?
It doesn't matter. Just pick a number and let's go.
I make motion to extend the meeting to nine fifteen.
Moving to second, we extend to nine fifteen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those no, thank you. Okay, let's do a gender-related public comment. Who's first? Mary, Michael, somebody with a letter that's name that starts with a letter other than M?
Um, I did, the first email I sent in is pretty straightforward. I just went down. I think that's all readable. I'm not going to cover that because you all have that and the consultant has it and you recommended that they look at the public. Thank you. Um, I want to give you a few examples. I love cottage housing. It's a great thing. There is cottage housing on Northeast Eleventh Court in Redmond. It's east off of one hundred and thirty-second Avenue Northeast. You can't drive by there because it's private, but you can go look online and you can see how it's laid out. But it's actually really beautiful. And then the other one I really like is called Kirkland Bungalows. It's still on, um, one hundred and thirty-second Avenue Northeast. It's at Northeast Ninety-seventh Street. And there's actually housing across from it on the east side that's good too. But you can drive through the bungalows. It's two point two acres with fifteen homes. And each home is just under, I think, fifteen hundred square feet. They have a single car garage. But I had sent this in years ago. It's my favorite thing. Nobody ever said back, but you should look at that sometime if you drive by or just, I think you can even go street view. It's just Google into it. The other thing is, is the Wonerf or Vonerf was spoken tonight. If you know where the Habitat for Humanity is, just up from that is Highcroft. If you go in there, they have Vonerf streets. Um, I lived in Holland for three years. In Holland, they have row houses and they don't have a lot of room for everything. So you have your road, your parking where your kids play, your basketball, everything, your row house there, no splits between them, and it works really well. So if you've never been there, you can drive through that or walk through it. Um, it's a really, so it's local. And I think it's a really good thing. Um, and then I guess cohousing was a topic on the agenda. So I asked AI to tell me a little bit about it. So, uh, for Bozeman, Montana, which is the last best place to live, cohousing owned lands in South Bozeman. The property is five point three acres. It features a stream and views of the mountains to the east. The property is just a mile and a half from Montana State University. It's two miles from downtown and it's adjacent to Main Street to the Mountains Trail. Elementary and middle schools are also less than a mile away. As far as how big the units are, sometimes small numbers get thrown out. I want you to erase those. The units in Bozeman Cohousing Development range in size from five hundred seventy-six feet to over fourteen hundred square feet. The development includes on just five point three acres, forty-three units, including two affordable units. And it is a model that includes private homes and shared spaces. The shared spaces include a garden, a common house for meals and park space. The development is designed to encourage community and sustainability. The project uses a variety of open spaces and small-scale agriculture. And then, and in the, when AI gave it to me, there's also a couple of articles that are related. One is called, "There's Community and Consensus, But It's No Commune", by Tom Verde from the New York Times. Another one is, "Why Cohousing Could Be The Answer For Aging Baby Boomers", by Lloyd Alter. And another one called, "Modern Housing With Village Virtues", by Courtney E. Martin, also from the New York Times. And then there's just a little bit, "An Authentic Neighborhood For A Sustainable Future", about cohousing. Cohousing is intentionally planned community of private homes and shared common spaces. The homes are modestly sized, modern and built in clusters. The common space includes gardens, pathways, amenities and a large common house where members spend time together for meals and activities. By design, cohousing encourages a culture of sharing and interaction with the balance of privacy. Residents choose their level of involvement in community activities and the theme prevails where neighbors become lifelong friends. Cohousing creates a village where children go out their door and play with friends in a safe environment. The space is designed with cars on the periphery and people on the interior. Adults interact frequently, that is to say, for nightly dinners without having to arrange times to meet. Neighbors know each other and provide a support system in times of need. People share things like lawnmowers, tools and other supplies in order to reduce costs and the amount of storage needed for material items. Residents do not necessarily share the same ideologies other than the desire to be part of a community that knows and supports their neighbors. Um, and then how is homeownership legally structured in cohousing communities? Although one or two of cohousing communities in the U.S. are organized as limited equity cooperatives, which I've never heard of before, most are structured as condominiums or planned unit developments, PUDs. In what is called Lot Development Model, members jointly own the common property and facilities and are the sole owners of the lot on which they build their own single-family house. Sometimes they just own the land directly under their homes, the footprint, or that plus a small back or front private yard. In retrofit cohousing, existing buildings are used or renovated so that certain spaces can be used by a whole community and for its common activities. The ownership structure varies considerably in retrofit housing. And then there was other questions like, what if I want to have or leave or move out of that community? But anyway, I just got those off. So it's a real thing. It exists. It's really cool idea. I just brought it up because I think when you're doing this type of thing and looking at what we're having at the housing in the futures, we should try to look at the best things that we have. So since it's a long meeting tonight, I'll cut out a minute early, but thank you for listening. And I hope you'll look through and read, um, some of my stuff I emailed in. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else? How about on the, on the call?
We have one hand raised on the line and I'm going to say two. Yeah, so Mr. James Eastman, I'm going to promote you right now.
James Eastman, he slates the Mamish Parkway. You wanted a non-M-A, M name? That's what you get. So my youngest child, he, uh, is a chatterbug. He loves to chit chat to the point where it can become exhausting at, at times. And to help calm him down, we, uh, buy him all sorts of books. New Guinness Book of World Records, National Geographic, you name it. Every year we buy him books which spur his mind and then he comes back to you with all sorts of questions. And a game that he loves to play with us is, would you rather? Would you rather die by ten hornet bites or ten red ant bites? Would you rather this? Would you rather that? So he's, uh, up too late to attend this meeting. I said, Nels, give me a would you rather question I can share with city council or planning commission. And he said, Dad, would you rather have twenty dollars a day for the rest of your life or a brand-new ski boat? And I had to start doing the math and, you know, I had to figure out how many more years I'm going to live. You know, how much does a ski boat cost? What's the value of the ski boat down on the lake? You know, would I actually use it that much? And a lot of that, you know, your answer that, uh, probably depends, but you're going to run the numbers. So anyways, uh, this code that's coming out, with ever since this packet has come out, I've been playing would you rather with myself, going over the code. And I'm only going over a House Bill thirteen thirty-seven versus eleven-ten. So I have to commend city staff and, uh, the consultant, uh, really, to come up with this code. Like I have four years in home building degree in construction management and like my max is hit and that's just trying to understand it. So the expertise to create this is just off the charts. So I applaud you, uh, for this code and all the hard work you've put into it. Uh, so I have been playing would you rather though, between those, essentially those two house bills. And I run the numbers, uh, with thirteen thirty-seven. I say, okay, if I have a six thousand square foot lot, I can put a three thousand square foot home with a garage. I can also add two, one thousand square foot ADUs in, which gives me the five thousand square feet on a sixteen thousand, or a six thousand square foot lot. But then I also have parking that, uh, I have to add, which adds another five hundred square feet. So that's like fifty-five hundred divided by six thousand, which gets you like a FAR of, I think it's point nine one for three units under thirteen thirty-seven. Um, but on the chart for eleven-ten, if you do the math, or, you know, the allotment, I think it's at point eight zero. So if I'm a developer, just right off the bat, just that one scenario, I'm, I'm going with thirteen thirty-seven. There might be an argument, well, you, the parking that you put in there for the FAR is not allowed because it's on the surface, you know? Well, there might also be an argument, well, you're the one that required me to have the parking. Like, wouldn't you rather have it in the garage than on the surface? I don't know. There's some arguments there, but it also, uh, goes into lot coverage and, uh, yard coverage and stuff that thirteen thirty-seven is exempt from. So my whole point that I'm trying to make is ultimately, we want middle housing. I think, I think that's the goal, is more middle housing. I've also been cooking a lot at home the last few weeks and I've noticed that I cook way more meat and buy way more meat when I cook than when my wife cooks. So I just don't think there's enough meat on the bone in this, uh, middle housing standard. And there's also a, a lot that we can do. I've emailed some stuff over, some suggestions, but, um, I think we can improve it various ways. Also, we talked a lot about, um, well, in the last meeting, we talked about accessory dwelling units and how they can be in either, uh, the regular standard or the middle housing overlay. But then when we talked about the overlay, well, you said, well, they're just like everything else. So I didn't understand that. A lot of the verbiage in the code for accessory dwelling units is somewhat conflicting. Uh, we say that for density purposes, they count as one dwelling unit. Does that mean in R1, if you want to build an ADU, you got to have two acres now? And then to build a thirty, you need three acres? I think that means that it's for the middle housing overlay. But then you throw accessory dwelling unit in the middle housing overlay and it's like, well, the state says that they're supposed to be exempt from FARS and, you know, uh, the middle housing overlay is FAR-driven, so you're mixing apples with oranges. So I don't know really why somebody would want to build a accessory dwelling unit in the middle housing overlay. But then also, when you read the code, it says accessory dwelling units may be found alongside triplexes, or I think that's what it says. I don't really understand that, uh, part of, of it either. Like, would you build a triplex in accessory dwelling unit on a lot? I guess with affordable maybe, but, um, there's some confusion there. We use out, we left out the word gross, um, in describing accessory dwelling units for livable space. And I think that's probably where the FAR numbers diverge. Uh, but ultimately, when it comes down to the affordability, uh, charge, um, I'm afraid we're pitting low-income housing versus middle housing. One is at the expense of another. Uh, that's concerns me. I think our focus should be on building something so awesome as our code, where we get all this middle housing and builders are going to want to pay the fee, build the, uh, low-income housing so you get both. Uh, but by not leaving any meat on the bone as part of the overlay, I don't think you're going to, you may get some low-income housing, but I think middle housing, that's, uh, that's a silent killer. There's a letter I submitted about a month ago by Christine Gregoire, uh, going over that same argument. You know, we see that, uh, there's a huge need for low-income housing, but middle housing, uh, sometimes you just don't see it or notice it. It's like the silent death. So, uh, I encourage planning commission, you can only can control what you can control, but I'd encourage you to maybe up the FARS to what the state is recommending at least. And then, uh, there's numerous other things that I, uh, put in my letter I sent over today. Thank you so much.
Thanks, James. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Paul Stickney, you're welcome to share your comment right now.
Hello, planning commissioners. I got a lot out of today's meeting and echo what Mary, A. James and all of you have said about a lot of work has gone into this. And there's still a lot of work to do, but some really good thoughtful conversations across the board. Have some interesting snippets to add to the mix. I'm not going to cover anything that I wrote with my comments in today, turning in my take of that, um, the entire code. But these are some, some more things. I have done a little bit of research on affordable housing and I found a more-than number. More of the time, the cost for affordable housing, that is at units under eighty percent AMI, is roughly thirty percent land, fifty percent construction and twenty percent soft costs or all else. So a question I have for the religious and faith-based parcels, are the cost of construction and the all else at a price that affordable housing can be provided if there's no real land cost or not? Then I called some county folks, I won't say who, and stumped them with a, a question. My question was, is the size of a unit at thirty percent AMI, fifty percent AMI and eighty percent ANI the same? Or are they smaller? Or in the alternative, is the subsidy larger needed to and the units have to be the same? The answer was, that's a great question. We've never thought about that. That's something else to add to the mix. My, my sister called me from Calgary, Canada, where she's lived for many, many years. Lives in a real established neighborhood in Calgary and they're doing some missing middle housing. And she was almost afraid to say this to her neighbors, but I feel this is an issue for Samamish and it's the intersection of character and money. She called me up and said, hey, I've heard of some people selling their homes for, to build more condos and units and they tear them down and they, uh, do that. And a lot of my neighbors are up in arms about it, but I'm thinking about it. What, how much more would I get for that? Well, that's a fair question. And this goes to some of the things that were talked about tonight that I'll, I'll jump into in just a sec. But what I told her was, you need to go find out for the homes that sold in your general neighborhood, what would they have sold for as a resale of single-family homes? And what did they sell for, for the missing middle price? Now, that's not the term that was used in Calgary. I'm, I'm going to use that term. How much more is that? So that's what you have to, have to judge. So she's in process of going out and talking to agents to, to find out. But circling back to tonight's meeting, I'm going to stay on my sister's example, but I'm going to turn it into a lot of what I heard tonight in Samamish and give you my take. If somebody builds a new house, one for one on a lot, I don't see charging them a, a affordable housing fee. If they expand a house for their own use, no ADU, no extra units, no affordable housing fee. But if it's a missing middle situation where more than one dwelling unit is created, that has value, that has an increase. And I don't know the exact number, but a portion of that is fair game for some affordability fee because the owner will get a lot more money, they just won't get all of it. And that's what I'm not sure I heard tonight in, in this discussion. So I just wanted to, to share that. So I just wanted to, to share that. Comments I totally agree with is the comments made about what's reasonable and not. Example, you can't take a ten-lot plat of three-point-five-million-dollar houses and get any of them to five or six hundred grand. So I'd like to make a recommendation based on size. If we allow either fractional or complete units for large houses, don't have any of those builders provide an eighty percent unit. Have them provide more money based on the sizes of the house they're, they're building that goes into the Somamish Fund for Affordable Housing. Somebody who builds a thirty-five-hundred-foot house, they pay X for their fee, but they don't have to provide one, no matter how many they build. Somebody who, who does twenty-five-hundred feet, they pay Y. Now, if it gets down into cottages that are eight-hundred-ish feet or a thousand square feet, that's where you can begin to provide a affordable unit itself. So I agree completely with the comments tonight. Somamish is really unique. And I think that our affordable housing units, not to be at all discriminatory, shouldn't be too much over eight or nine-hundred square feet max that we actually provide units for. I think that's still plenty big for two and three-bedroom housing units. So, and I know there's a whole lot more to, to talk about this. But now I'd like to move into market rate needs that are far larger than affordable housing needs. Not more important, just far larger. Let me give you some examples. Somebody who sells a home for two-point-one million, they may want to buy a condo or townhome for one-point-three. That's not going to be small. That's going to be larger. Somebody who sells for one-point-seven million in Somamish, they may want to buy something for one million. Now, those are more affordable than they had, but they're not eighty percent or AMI. And as I have asserted often and for a long time, the magnitude of shorting housing, shortage housing imbalance from five-hundred to one-four dwarfs the need for workforce housing for eighty percent AMI. Both are critical. Both need to be managed, but they need to be contemplated. And this is all a part of the mix. Appreciate the chance to talk.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else? All right. Anything else from Evan or David? That was enough. All right. I think that's it for this evening. Would someone move to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second? It's been moving a second. We adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? See you next time. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.